I have no clock.
It's loading and running online.
We have a blank screen so far.
Is it recording now?
Okay, occasional call the meeting to order if you would join in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, bless this gathering and continue to remind us that we are servants of the people. Bless also the family of Patrick Sullivan, a volunteer EMT with the Lake of Woods Rescue Squad, who followed your example, Lord, by continuing to serve your people until his strength gave up from the cancer that recently took his life. May we all follow his example of service. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Uh, first and foremost, we have some additions to the agenda. Uh, item four A and item four C have been deleted. Item twelve E has been added and there are two more additions to the closed meeting. Are there any other additions or deletions or?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like under, maybe it's a nine C, I suppose, under discussion items, uh, to discuss the issues raised by Comcast switching stations. I know that you first had some feedback on that.
You know, props to my sister-in-law because she was the only one who was able to actually get an answer. So she, um, actually got a response back, which is pretty crazy.
Good. All right. Uh, any other changes? Okay, in that case.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero on absence. And at this point in time, we begin the budget work session, Sheriff's Office Pay and Benefits Study. Or maybe not.
Mr. Chairman, they, um, that's communicated that they're gonna be here, but as you can see, they aren't.
On my way in, there were some emergency calls, I know, because there were several emergency vehicles headed north on twenty.
In that case, should we take up the regular agenda until the point in time they're here?
Yes, sir, with the exception of the public appearances who don't know to come until.
Right, okay. Uh, with that then, I would look for an approval of the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero on an absence.
Probably give a delay on the public comment.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Yeah. Um, board comment?
I have one comment. Uh, our attorney, looking at the transfer of the tank and the water system to RSA, uh, our bond, uh, bonds for that school do not permit a transfer. And I think Tom's got something worked out for a lease.
Yeah, I decided I better check the bond documents and because they're VPSA bonds, they have very strict requirements and there's, there's actually a certificate in there, use certificate, that says we cannot transfer ownership. So I spoke with Mr. Shackelford, who represents RSA on the telephone yesterday, and we discussed doing a lease agreement instead and I bounced that off in principle with bond counsel and in principle, the bond counsel thought that would work if we did a lease agreement. The bond is matures in twenty twenty-nine, so basically we have to do a lease to that point.
Okay.
Does that lease include all maintenance and upgrades?
That's what it should include.
Whatever all those things are.
My conversation with Mr. Shackelford is that the lease would, would basically embody the same terms as the previous transfer agreement we're going to. And so that's, that's the intention. I told Mr. Shackelford, as long as the board didn't change its view and I was instructed to move forward, we'd get moving on those documents.
Okay.
No, we're in communication now.
I have text.
Okay. Any further board comment? In that case, we'll move on to the action items. Uh, seven eighth, engagement of Springstead for the county administrator search.
Mr. Chairman, the, the board has discussed with me, um, reaching out to John Isavina to get a proposal, really to just update the contract terms for a county administrator search. They've done that. Um, I believe that you have a, a packet distributed with the agreement, which is two pages to execute and then a, um, background documents along the search itself. And so they have proposed the cost not exceed fifteen thousand dollars and the expenses, the reimbursable expenses not to exceed four eight hundred dollars. So could the add placements and that type of thing for the search? And, um, if that's agreeable to the board, the county attorney has, um, reviewed the contract. If it's fine with it, then I'll engage Springstead tomorrow.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero on absent. Okay, letter to the General Assembly recommending support in lieu of agreement for single-family dwelling coverage for stormwater ordinance.
Great.
I'll just make myself a hand.
Uh.
All right. Uh, this is a result, kind of a culmination of our activity on the, um, Rappahannock River Basin Commission regarding the stormwater ordinance, the impending implementation of that beginning on July first, twenty fourteen. And this, uh, the committee has done a lot of research and a lot of them are already heavily involved with stormwater management. And I've listed several of the, the glaring omissions that the, the commission feels that they, that the General Assembly should at least incorporate into the ordinance as it's written now. One of the most pressing is item number one and it's, in my professional opinion, putting a lot of burden on the single property, on the single lot owner, who's just simply trying to develop a home, build a home. And it's fairly, I would say it's unanimous amongst the plan administrators and stormwater management technicians throughout the Commonwealth, at least in our region, so that we have to rectify this and make it a little bit more equitable. Because right now, we allow it, the state allows it for erosion settlement control. And as such, we feel it's only right that we extend that in lieu of agreement for the stormwater management as well. Because it does become very expensive, especially in the case, say, of somebody who can only afford a manufactured home. Uh, you think of the cost of the land, putting the home in, and then septic and water cost. And then to above that, the additional fees and they'd have to come up with an engineered plan. And it just becomes, you know, the cards start stacking against somebody who wishes to own a, a home. So it just becomes prohibitively expensive. So we're just taking this approach that's a much more equitable solution. And the rest, this is really the one I wanted to focus on, but I, I feel that we should support what the river basin committee has suggested to the state. I think it's very thoughtful and it's coming from, um, experts in the field.
People that do that for a living.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Has VACO taken a position on this at all? Are they?
Not that I've seen.
Have you seen anything? I haven't seen anything either.
The Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission has taken a position that they support, um, this type of, um, this area.
And our representatives with, uh, Culpepper Soil and Water Conservation District has also been instrumental in this and as well as Julie mentioned, the, um, Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission is also has staff on the committee.
How often, uh, if somebody's just building a single home, do we disturb more than an acre?
But that's, that really varies. It depends on the geography and the soil of the land, uh, but.
Sometimes a long.
A long driveway.
A driveway could do it.
Yeah. Now, it's just, it's really depends, it's on a lot by lot basis.
Well, you, you started thinking about putting in a drain field.
Yeah.
Well, I'm moving ahead.
Drain field does, twirls a lot, moves a lot more. The driveway, I hadn't thought about the driveway.
My, my old.
My driveway doesn't pick up an acre.
My, my old home, literally for everything I had to dig up was over an acre. I'd had to put a stormwater in.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense. And, you know, it's, it's reasonable when you're looking at a case where there's a large general development plan for a subdivision. But when you're just talking a single lot that somebody's developing, that, that isn't covered in a general development plan, I think it's just, uh, beyond the pale, quite honestly.
So, so this would, uh, so we would ask that it not apply to a single lot? Of a guy who's developing more than one lot?
Right, it's, it's, the, the exception is just if a property owner comes in to build a house, we give them in lieu of agreement for that single lot that's outside of a subdivision.
Okay. The, I was just looking in, in our package under the VACO legislative initiatives and on page twelve of their list, they have stormwater, but it's not exactly on point with this. They, they talk about the fees and they talk about, they want adequate funding. I'm, seems to me that we should at least copy them on the resolution or make them aware of.
Okay.
This resolution if we, if we adopt it, uh.
Yeah, they, they also asked for a one-year delay on implementation.
That's a different position. You already did that, didn't you, at the, uh, at the, at the meeting?
Right.
I believe part of the position of the regional commission, and if they can, um, elaborate or correct me if I'm remembering it incorrectly, is that for a rural jurisdiction, this, um, would be a, a much better, you know, the counties that are not as rural and the places that tend to not do as many one-off houses, um, don't have the burden that this would place on a county like Madison, Parkview, or Rappahannock. And, um, I don't know if VACOs would coincide with ours, it's not depending on how they consider the, the issue.
I mean, it seems like, uh, the state is trying to, you know, in terms of fees and stuff like that, basically trying to get out of the business of having to fund it through, uh, general revenue and do it all with fees.
That's right. And they'll be, actually, I'm, I'm assuming they'll be making some money since they get twenty-eight percent of the fees that we collect and they also, and even if, uh, the county were to reduce the fees to lessen the burden on the development community, we'd still have to provide that minimum fee that's in the state ordinance right now. It's a lose-lose situation. I mean, we just have to carry out what they've.
We don't collect it, we pay it anyway. I remember that lovely little provision. Well, my only comment about VACO is that I think we should let, make sure that they know our position on it and, uh, let them react accordingly. I mean, this is not a one-size-fits-all kind of an issue.
Should we, should we info some of the other, uh, rural counties that would be affected by this?
Probably everybody in the, uh, in the district.
Rural caucus at least.
Yeah, yeah.
RRC.
Because they're gonna be impacted and that they probably have the same feelings I would imagine that we do.
Uh, I think both regions would be, if I may suggest, the George Washington Regional Commission, which is the Fredericksburg area, and also the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commissions as well.
Looking for a motion.
Yes, I would be.
I move we. Adopt this resolution. I was trying to see what it was called. It's called a resolution, as presented.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, the only thing I would, uh, is make sure that we specifically, uh, send this to our own legislators.
Yes.
Right now, it's copied to just Scott and Reeves, I think I saw. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carries four zero on an absence. Uh, seven C, request for children at play sign on Fox Ten Lane.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, um, the citizen sent us a request from the board to consider a sign, children at play at, um, Fox Ten Lane. We detached the request from that citizen and we're seeking that board consider the adoption of the attached resolution.
Where is?
If he, uh, approves, then, um, the signs can be installed and, um, they would get their, their wish.
Where is Fox Ten? I didn't have a chance to look.
Um, I don't feel we do that.
It's.
What district?
It's, um, just on the east side of Route twenty, um, off of, I believe it's La Horro Road, um, right on the eastern side of twenty from the airport.
Yeah, it's in, it's in two, okay. Ms. Builder also requests a lowering of the speed limits and I was just wondering, do we?
What is this?
Do we, I don't.
It's not marked, it's fifty-five.
Yeah. Well, it's a lane, so it's probably not a six hundred number.
It was a eleven hundred number, like a.
But if it isn't marked, uh, I, I guess, I didn't see in the, uh, in the resolution, a, uh, anything, anything dealing with speed. And I don't know if it's a, we, if we should be requesting a speed study or posting of, or what, but, uh, maybe, maybe we should include at least some reference to, uh, having VDOT look at the, the issue of speed.
They're gonna be out there. They might as well look at the issue of speed as well as the, uh, sign.
Right, that's mine.
So we would, uh.
Mr. Matt.
I would, I would, uh, I would make the motion that we, uh, send, adopt this resolution, but, uh, modify it to include a request that the, uh, uh, speed, uh, uh, speed be addressed as well. Speed be examined as well.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero on an absence. All right, uh, with that, we'll move on to appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any appointments? Okay. Uh, discussion items, comprehensive plan. Mr. Zodi.
I'm actually gonna recommend that we wait till after four o'clock, since that's how it was, um, advertised in the agenda, just in case somebody wants to come participate in this or observe or whatever.
Or have, they would have had a chance for a public comment before we got to it. Agreed.
Yeah, we should wait and agree.
So, let's look at the.
Meeting schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do we have any issues with the meeting schedule?
There isn't a need to adopt this. It would be adopted at the organization meeting in January. But particularly the January seventh meeting is, um, important to see so that people make.
So we need to adopt later if we didn't adopt the, uh.
Yes, sir, the, the January seven.
Yep.
Jim, any issues with you on this, since you'll be part of the board? Okay. Well, in that case, it looks like we're good. We're just sitting on the agenda.
I was gonna say, he's been, he's been making them to everyone since about April.
Never is.
Whenever he's been coming.
Should be more than he's always, he's already used to.
Didn't wanna make sure, wanna make sure he wasn't planning a vacation that, uh, big boat day. Okay. All right, uh, in that case.
He's gone on the seventh, he could be in real trouble.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Got all kinds of assignments.
Oh, yeah.
How many committees you would have for a set list?
Jim, I could get rid of his, uh.
I know of three or four that. Are unwanted.
The rite of passage.
Okay, um, do we wanna discuss Comcast now or later?
We can do that now.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I've been contacted by, I guess, four different people, uh, that received the, the flyer. I haven't actually seen it myself, but, because I don't, where I live, we don't have Comcast. Announcing that on somewhere around the fifteenth, seventeenth of December, I forget the date now, uh, Comcast would be changing the local stations from Charlottesville station to Richmond stations. And, uh, in each case, these four people voiced great concern about that. One of the reasons they, in one case at least, the, the only reason, so she said that she even has cable is because of better reception for the Charlottesville stations. It, it appears, and Shannon, you may know more about this than I've been able to learn so far, it appears that, that this is not actually a Comcast decision. It's a Wahoo, W A H U, which is a station in Charlottesville, decision, um, along with Nielsen.
All right.
So.
If, if, if you want, just for the record, I can read this part into it and it just says, and this is from, this is from the, um, I'm assuming he's the CEO of Comcast and it just says, up until four years ago, Orange was part of the Charlottesville TV viewing area and broadcast TV stations from Charlottesville. And approximately two thousand and nine, the TV viewing area changed to Richmond due to a ruling by the state board, the, the Nielsen as you're referring to. Comcast continued to air both Richmond and Charlottesville station until most recently, the Fox affiliate, Wahoo in Charlottesville, decided to drop its rights to air programming in markets outside of Charlottesville, which includes Orange. Other channels have followed and in order to accommodate this change, along with complying to the Richmond TV station's carriage, we are making the following changes on December seventeenth. Other providers will be making the changes as well. Um, he acknowledges that this has been a hot topic and, um, but he would suggest contacting Nielsen. And, you know, because they're the ones who put the areas and after contacting them, he said he would reach out to, um, the Wahoo as new information comes to me. He'll be more than happy to pass it along.
I have two questions about that. If, if those with antennas can continue to receive the Charlottesville station and those with small dishes, I happen to be one of those, get the Charlottesville station.
I, I have a dish and we get Charlottesville.
And so there, there, there's a little bit of this that doesn't seem to quite line up. I know the, uh, the town mayor, town of, uh, Orange mayor sent a letter to Comcast expressing concern and I, I haven't seen whether there's a response to that yet. But I guess my suggestion at this point is that we, uh, uh, consider at least expressing concern and, and maybe, uh, uh, making contact with apparently now three entities, Comcast, Nielsen, and Wahoo, in some manner to, uh, get further clarification as to what's going on, express the concern of the constituents and the like. I don't have any answers at this point. It's just, there seems to be.
Was there any indication as to why the state board changed this, uh?
It was done in two thousand and nine.
And I suspect, and I don't remember ever seeing anything like that coming through as an announcement by the state.
I do remember, and since you're a small business.
And it's when, it's when it went all, it was when we went to digital.
That's right. When, when, when there was a switch to digital, my small dish, uh, who do I have? Dish Network, I think it was, it is and was, uh, sent a notice that they were gonna switch to the Richmond for the local. And I said, fine, I'm going to the other provider if that's what you do. And they, somehow they found a way to provide, continue to provide the Charlottesville stations. So I think it was picked at about the time the digital change was made.
It was. Cause we had the same, we had the same issue. We couldn't get Charlottesville stations. Although we were twenty minutes from Charlottesville, so we had to get Richmond. It, it's, and it was all the digitals, but once you, if you, yeah, whatever, you changed your equipment and now we get Charlottesville stations. I mean, what's gonna happen is if people really want Charlottesville station, Comcast is getting the potential to get ready to lose.
Bunch of, bunch of customers.
A bunch of customers.
Yeah, I, I mean, in all four cases that I talked to, they were gonna go to the small dish and, and get the, cause the, the Charlottesville stations were important to them for weather, local news, sports, you name it. And there's no real affiliation, at least.
When we have anything up here, it's always channel twenty-nine that's up here.
That's right.
That's doing interviews, no but, no place else is.
I, I mean, unfortunately, someone's gonna have to do a little bit of research to find out what the right contact points need to be, but it, it sounds like there's at least the three. The Nielsen, state, Comcast itself, and then the chain.
Might wanna reach out. This is a good opportunity for us to reach out to Ed and Bryce to see if they can help us a little bit with this as well.
Well, let's find out if the, you know, if it's the state thing, then obviously they can do some, have some leverage there. I'm not sure that Comcast, uh, has, has much of a, uh, much of a role there, uh, it's the local stations. So if we, uh, you know, and the local stations probably aren't gonna feel that bad about it. Uh, you know, if they're, if they're providing a signal to the, uh, dish, uh, to the satellite companies, uh, they're already reaching this market, so, uh, I don't know, do, do they have to pay to get into the Comcast network or not? That might be why Wahoo had decided that, uh, hey, uh, I don't wanna pay, I'm not getting enough customers down there.
Or it may be a different license with the FCC.
That's true.
I, 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 this, this could be lots of different things.
So let's put it on our county administrator and her to have to figure out what this, how, all this is about before she leaves.
Well, and, and maybe we shouldn't involve Tom because you, you, you hold the franchise agreements, as I understand it, with Comcast.
You ever actually reviewed it? There's not much we can do. And the, the franchise agreement was entered in two thousand and two, was it with Adelphi? And then Comcast bought them in oh-six and that franchise agreement runs till twenty seventeen. And there's, there's no provisions in there as to which local stations they have to carry. And, and so there's, there's not much we can do until we get ready to renegotiate with them.
I think I only, I remember there's one provision that says you gotta have a community server, a public access channel.
Right, but, but there's no requirement that they carry Charlottesville over Richmond.
We, we've had trouble with Comcast, uh, down at our end all the time.
Do you put your local down there?
Uh.
Probably.
Most of them, uh, we use both Richmond and, uh, and DC.
You see.
But this is what's really funny. Where I work, guess where their local channels are? Charlottesville.
Comcast in town has DC, Richmond, and, um, Charlottesville.
They just did a new franchise agreement on if it's in their new franchise agreement or not. But they just entered into a new franchise agreement, the town did.
And we had that arrangement where we were getting franchise fees and then they did away with franchise fees and turned it into a tax. And we lost thirty thousand a year down at Lake of the Woods.
All right, so then we want to charge short timer with, um, one last task.
One?
For now.
Well, it, it, basically it's just we have to figure out what the, what the, uh, what the arrangements are, why what we did, what they did, Comcast, it's fairly obvious, uh, why Nielsen did what it did and is there any chance of reversing any of those?
Should we generate a resolution that we're opposed to this?
I don't think we know what to put in the resolution yet.
Uh, no, but once we do.
Oh, sure, sure.
No, no problem.
And of course, I'm, I'm not sure we can do anything by there seventeen. Didn't you say the deadline was seventeenth, Jim, from your email? December seventeen.
Yeah, that's, this isn't getting resolved before the seventeen.
We could craft a resolution and y'all could ratify it on the seventeenth.
But people have made their change that day, apparently.
I'm sure that's just a switch that can be turned back the other direction.
You, you would think.
Or a little code that's.
Yeah, that, that's, that's nothing but one, one of the IT guys going, done. Okay, well, in that case, onward and upward. All right, uh, well, we're just waiting then. Any question on the information items? Or committee reports? And we'll say for the committee for the school board, they did all their public hearings on the, um, master planning and the CIP, uh, CIP is delayed until after we meet. Uh, the master planning was passed unanimous, unanimously. Uh, another Nelson, we'll move to calendar.
Every year, the chamber has a legislative, um, conference and every year we have the opportunity to get, um, up before the legislators and share with them any insights or interests that the county has.
Like unhappiness with Comcast.
Or your AM or.
Or stor- or stormwater.
Or stormwater or unfounded mandates.
Yes.
But regardless, um, if the board does want to make a statement, we would, um, want to share with the chamber and, um, pay for folks to attend the dinner and let them know who would be speaking on behalf of the board, because they publish that. Um, pay for folks to attend the dinner and let them know who would be speaking on behalf of the board, cause they publish that on the um.
Well, I I'll be happy to go.
I'd be happy for you to go.
I I would be very happy for you to go, I I mean, I I think there, it's certainly an opportunity to uh, have their attention to. What the heck, and we have a list, I I would include at least Comcast, unfunded mandates, stormwater and maybe others. Alright, well, give me a list of things that the two I wanna address. Go visit Ed and Bryce.
Maybe Bryce will even show up.
You think, it'd be the first anytime. Are you gonna go? We're we're invited, I don't know if.
I I've got a jail board meeting, uh, but I plan to drop over there after the jail board meeting.
So there might, there's a possibility at least that there would be at least three of us there?
We can make a media note to say that they're.
Uh, that's the only reason, I mean, I don't know yet that that will be the case, but it's certainly possible.
I'll be coming back from down, 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 real far south.
Could be, sometimes the jail meetings don't last very long, sometimes they're a drag, go to later nine o'clock.
And and Dogwood Village normally asks that the uh, health center commission members try to attend, just because it, they're hosting, so.
So we'll register three and see what happens.
Alright.
You don't have, you don't have to notice a meeting if there, this is somebody else's event, as long as the three of them don't sit and talk about this county business.
So we have to sit at different tables, huh?
No, you can sit at the same table, you just can't talk about the comprehensive lane.
You can sit at the same table. And you talk about the Redskins, you just can't, yeah, as long as you don't discuss county business.
That'd be a short conversation. That's right, we wouldn't get through advertisers with that.
I'd rather risk the cop than to talk about the Redskins.
Alright, uh, the retreat, is there a preference on the dates, the seventeenth through the nineteenth through the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth?
It's supposed to snow that weekend.
Which one?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth to nineteenth.
We have one vote for the seventeenth to nineteenth.
That's fine.
Like wrapped around the.
I'll go with that.
That's, that's a, that's a four day weekend.
And are we really talking about three days?
No, basically, what it means is that weekend, Tyler will come in Friday night and then it'll be um, two days, Saturday is Sunday. I don't even, I don't even know why.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm with Shannon, I I'm thinking, do, shouldn't we?
I don't even know that we need Tyler for this, and I don't know that it needs to be, I mean. I would say in my assessment, we did a little bit of a paradigm shift two years ago and. The need was there for that.
What Tyler and I have discussed, and it's just been banner back and forth in preparation for having dates and that kind of thing, so needless to say, it's up to you all. But what we discussed as topics for the retreat are um, expectations, characteristics, or whatever you wanna call it for your next county administrator and getting the five. Board members talking about that, review of the fourteen priorities and which ones, we know which ones we finished. Do the um, three or four that are left, do we want to continue those, do we wanna add more, are we going to um. Discussing the route three initiative and the next steps for the two years as a board and just getting the chemistry between the new board.
I'd like to do, I'd like to have her again, I think it was very productive.
I really, I really don't think we'll need a second day.
I asked her about the second day and um, I have some comments from her. She had um, she's flushed out what she has started for retreat and again, it's, it's totally up to you. But um, she feels that it's important to have the second day and she has talked about um. How long it might take, she she says three fourths of the second day is what she would uh, propose.
Well, I'm going to be a whole Sunday, yeah.
Well, three fourths is pretty much two.
It would be eight thirty.
For people who go to bed early like I do, it's uh.
Eight thirty to three on the second day.
I'm not doing it on a long weekend, I'm sorry. And then it's also not fair for the staff to be there, it's a long weekend, I I just.
What's the other possibility?
Well, it doesn't sound like it's convenient for Jim that weekend, so.
Twenty-fifth and sixth.
If I can ski back from the mountain after.
What's the other date she had a cancellation on?
I think Boulder County canceled it.
I go with either weekend, I don't have a problem with either weekend.
Women.
There's a, Bo- she had a county that canceled.
I think it's maybe the tenth, eleventh and twelfth.
It's the um, tenth, eleventh and twelfth. And that was supposed to be the VCA new supervisors, but they moved that to the third.
Yeah, the the earlier weekend would suit me better, cause I have a problem on the twenty-sixth, starting on the twenty-sixth. I can, I can do the tenth, eleventh, twelfth, but I'd rather do the, the other one, I've got my son's still at home from school.
I can do the, any of the three weekends.
Well, it looks like the tenth, eleventh and twelfth.
Yeah, I can do, I can do that, or I can do the eighteenth, either, e- either of those two works for me.
We could, from a staff perspective, we've made the seventeenth, we've made the um, the tenth. So we're happy with you doing it.
No. If everybody can do the tenth, then let's do that.
Okay.
But.
If she can do it.
And if she can't do it, do I confirm the seventeen?
No.
Why, we're saying the tenth, are we gonna meet with her ahead of time on that?
That's just the day she's coming in, so it's really the eleventh.
Yeah, okay.
For us, it's eleven.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing a three day.
Cause all of a sudden we went from two to three, when it probably should be one.
And I don't know that um, I mean. I don't know that the, the, the things that we're talking about, I mean, I like the idea of discussing the priorities and I think that would be number one. I think that's why we had Springsstead to come in and help us with um, looking at the things that we want in a county administrator, so I don't necessarily know of the three topics. That that is the one that I would take my time to discuss, so I actually would remove that one.
Okay, so we can schedule another meeting with John instead of having him just come to that.
And then um.
Would that be within the, with the contract?
He is supposed to, to do that, but we can, we can set two meetings, we can set a meeting with John, and then we can set a second meeting with Tyler at a separate weekend. Or Monday.
But I was just saying, when we talk, when we talk to John, if we, we meet with him, is that, that's already in the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, then that's not a problem.
I mean, what, what she says is that she's coordinated with John before and that she can work to lay the right groundwork for his recruitment and selection work. Um, however, we can work on the agenda, the topics later. She, she did say that she'd use a day before, so should they ask if one day will suffice, please say no.
Well, I mean, I can, I can think the, what. What we've got.
But I'm just relaying what she's.
She knows us well.
She said just anticipate it.
And I'm gonna be quite honest, I don't know that the route three initiative needs to be discussed then, since we've been doing it as a big group with everybody. Um, I just, I I just don't think it's.
Yeah, I mean, the the two things that.
I mean, we're kinda beating that horse really bad.
Yeah, the the two things, when I saw this on the calendar, the two things that came to my mind were the priorities, I think. Spend a little bit of time revisiting those and see where we are, that's, that's, that's fine. But the other thing that came to my mind, and it, and it, it's largely focused on the CIP but not exclusively, which is looking a little bit at the out years. In terms of the, the, the budget and the revenue and the CIP and how do we, where are we going on those, on those matters? Seem to me to be a topic that we need to get our, our arms around.
I, I think that's, I think that's a great, I think it's a great topic.
I do too.
I mean, we've got uh, some, you know, I mean, we need to talk about where we're going on taxes, where we're going on the investments, both CIP, schools. Uh, master plan that we're gonna be looking at.
There are a lot of pieces to that that are gonna be confronting us and and I.
Trying to put all that together.
And 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 talk about how we set the priorities and 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 phase things or whatever, all the related issues, it seems to me that that's, that's a productive. And and especially with Jim, you know, bringing in some, some, some new ideas and 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 needing also to sort of see what, how each of us feel.
See what he's getting into.
See what he, yeah, that's right, you're gonna, you're gonna love that part of it, I guarantee.
I just had a blot for a second, I was like, who's Jim?
We gotta work this, we gotta work this out, either go to last names or something, but uh.
I thought you were talking about yourself in the third person, Mayor, I was like.
We don't wanna do what they do in the football teams, I saw a guy the other night that had a last name and it took four first initials. Or four first letters to to distinguish between his brothers and a cousin or two, or something like that, but you gotta, we don't do that. But anyway, I I think a topic like that is one that uh, we, we don't, as part of the normal budget process, we really don't have a chance to get into the out years or or where we're headed.
Well, and I actually think, I like that idea because to me, it's, it's a little, I mean, it's actually something we need to really, really, really be working on and.
Yeah, we, we've got a CIP and we'll, and we'll do whatever we need to do to get through this next year's CIP, but we just sort of, you know, shift things out. And we don't sort of really plan the entire five year uh, segment, and I think we need to plan longer than just the.
And y'all might even kill me when I say this, even the priorities discussion, until we have a county administrator in place who can implement. And keep going, um, it might, that might even be something that, not that, not that the priorities don't keep going, but. You know, you're, we're throwing a whole lot on an interim and.
Uh, I, yeah, but I mean, otherwise we just defer, I mean, I think we have to do it.
I didn't say that, I didn't say, the stuff that we have, we have um, targeted as things that we need to continue to work on, we need to continue to work on them. But why in the world would you add something else on top of someone who's here for three months?
Because I think we need to think about it as we're looking at this coming budget.
Um, dear, I'm talking about the priority list, not the CIP. I'm talking about the, you know, reaching out to, you know, the, our fourteen priorities, I'm not talking about the CIP, I'm talking about the list of priorities. Well, you, you're, you're tasking someone with something who isn't even here.
But for the three months they're here, they'll be tasked with the continuum.
Exactly.
Yeah, my, my thought was it, just a revisitation of that, just to sort of confirm, yeah, that's, that's what we meant and then, and then, and then, no, 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 that's.
Yeah, I'm not talking a day full of um, redoing a whole bunch of stuff.
No, 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 no. That's a bef- that's a before break Saturday morning.
Well, that's actually, that's when you um, and then when you really truly do it, is when you do have your staff in place. Makes a little sense to me, but maybe we all.
Well, we can revisit it and, yeah, I agree, I don't think we need to beat it to death because we're out, that train's already running, but we need to refresh. Well, and I agree with Shannon on the root theory things, I mean, the steering committee's doing stuff and and Leah and I are doing, meeting all the time and and on and on and on, so that, I mean, there's not a lot. That we haven't already talked about on, on that.
At some point, at some point, we're gonna be, the steering committee is gonna come back with sort of a small area plan, and then that's gonna have to get uh, debated and discussed.
Right, right. But we, we won't be ready by the, this time for you.
No.
It it seems to me. Now, I, 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 having talked about this longer term view, there, I, I think we wanna structure that fairly carefully leading up to the retreat so that we, we have information and. And a good start is the five year plan that that Glenda has done, but the five year forecast that Glenda's done, but there, there's some other pieces to that, like, like how do we factor in?
What we just got in the, in terms of the uh, the CIP requests.
That and and the, and the ma- school master plan, factor that, there's a, there're fr- probably three or four major chunks of that that we need. To be reasonably well informed and prepared to discuss and have information about. I don't even know what they all are, cause I haven't thought about that for, but uh, that seems to me to be one, we might be getting ready to hear another one.
On that note.
How about that for an introduction?
We decide on a date.
I don't know that we.
The eleventh and twelfth.
Okay.
Or at least the eleventh.
With you, Jim.
Alright, let's see, hey, it's time for recess for dinner.
Can we go ahead?
We weren't supposed to be on seven anyway.
We do see indeed, y'all wanna go ahead and um, schedule those two before we get off the road.
Uh, both of those are fine with me.
Explain.
I forgot what they were.
Do you need a motion or?
The public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we schedule the public hearing for the text amendment changes on January fourteenth at seven PM.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero one absence. Okay, and the. The other date works for the dinner.
Uh, March eleventh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, in that case, make it so, and at that point in time, that takes us.
Did we get, did, did we formally voted or agreed to the B, the January seventh meeting?
Yeah, we, we, we kinda hope we're gonna be there.
Well, I'm just saying, are we gonna, you know, do we need to say anything in terms of uh, making it on the record?
You can, if you want, make a motion, please.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is January seventh, that takes us through all the agenda that we can do until a later point. So, we'll start where we want to start. You're on.
First of all, we wanna apologize for not being here at three o'clock when we were told to be here at seven, so, anyway, we're here, um.
That did take a couple hours.
I'm sorry, now, do we sit? We usually have a podium, I like the podium better.
Yeah, I do too.
You can duck behind that.
We bring the podium out at seven more.
Mike has been preparing uh, something that he, we were going to present to you all, and I'll just let him do all the talking, so.
Um, well, uh, lady and gentleman, um, uh, one of the things that, uh, this is, of course, is gonna be my second budget cycle through, uh, I learned a few things last time. Uh, one of them was that I, I need to uh, strike ahead of time before uh, budget money gets uh, alloc- allocated to different places. Um, since uh, just before I became chief deputy, uh, I started looking into uh, some issues that were be, being reported back to me by deputies. Uh, who were both with us at the agency and who had left, uh, as time goes on over some different things. Um, basically trying to figure out why it was that we had people that were leaving, uh, good, good people actually. Uh, who uh, were committed to doing a good job, uh, committed to doing the best they could for the citizens here. And uh, and they left none the same, and so I was kinda concerned because I didn't want it to be due to us. Uh, leadership is always uh, the first thing to be second guest, I think. Uh, I believe everybody sitting in front of the chair, in the chairs in front of me understands exactly how that is. Uh, and so you, you know, everybody wants to do the right thing and everybody wants to uh, um, be part of something good, I think. Uh, so I started looking at some of the issues that were being brought to me. Um, I believe you all have received a number of documents, I hope, uh, that I submitted back through. Um, I sent them yesterday, uh, there are a number of things, uh, there are basically some charts that I put together. Uh, a number of things that I was told, you didn't receive them, okay, um. Okay. I've got uh, I've got my computer with me and I do have them on that. Okay, thank you. Um, what I did, I started looking at the, the, one of the main things that we were being told was, uh, that people were having a hard time working for us. With, based on the money that they were receiving with us, uh, based on the benefits, uh, costs that the packages cost us here in Orange. As compared to other places, uh, surrounding us. Um, I myself have worked here twenty-three years now, uh, I always thought that we had a high uh, uh, high cost health insurance policy, honestly. I started here as a single person. high-cost health insurance policy, honestly. I started here as a single person and it was cheap. Uh, and the county does a great job for single employees. Uh, but when I got married, all of a sudden, my twenty dollars a month, or I think at the time, nothing, turned into a huge amount of money uh, when I had children. So, uh, but I I made, made my way and did the best I could, uh, being here. Uh, there's a number of people I think who wanna do the same thing, uh, chose a little bit of a different path than I did. Uh, so I started looking into the different things. Um, starting pay rates as I looked, uh, throughout the jurisdictions that we lose people to. Uh, these aren't, this does not include Madison County. Uh, we have not lost anybody to Madison County that I'm aware of. Um, we don't lose people to Gordonsville Police Department. Uh, so I left them out of my study that I did. Uh, our starting pay for, uh, deputy sheriffs is thirty-five thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars according to the pay scale. Um, we recently had somebody apply to the Orange Police Department. Uh, their starting pay is thirty, thirty-six nine fifty-six. Uh, which is a difference of eighteen hundred bucks. Uh, Green County Sheriff's Office starts paying people at forty thousand and seventy-six dollars. That's starting pay for a certified deputy sheriff. Forty thousand and seventy-six dollars. Uh, that is a difference of four thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars a year, and that's starting pay. Um, that figure in and of itself is just slightly under what we pay our sergeants to start. Uh, that's not our starting deputies, that's our sergeants. Uh, Louisa County pays thirty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars to start. That's a difference of two thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars. Culpeper's the closest to us, which I was pretty surprised at, honestly. I expected they were gonna be worse. Uh, but they're thirty-five thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars, so they pay a hundred and ten dollars more a year. Spotsavani County pays four, forty thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars a year. Uh, that is a difference of five thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars. That's the yearly starting rates for sworn deputy sheriffs. Uh, that, that are the starting rates, uh, for each of those different air agencies, as I checked. Um, dispatchers, our dispatchers start at thirty thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars. Uh, of course, Orange P D doesn't have any because we supply those. Uh, Green County Sheriff's Office starts theirs at thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars. Louisa County starts theirs at thirty-three thousand dollars. Culpeper starts theirs at twenty-six four twenty. So they're actually less than everybody else. Spotsavani's at thirty-five zero forty-one. Uh, so across the board, our dispatchers are also short. Um, and they would also get on me because I'm calling them dispatchers and not communications officers, but, uh, they're paid less as well. Um, when I started looking at the, uh, insurance policies for each one of those, uh, I started looking at them, uh, initially based on the total monthly cost. So it'd be what the county and the employee uh, would pay together, uh, in order to get their costs together. And I noticed out of all of those that we actually pay less monthly than every other one of those jurisdictions for the lowest health plan. Uh, it's hard to compare apples and oranges on low, medium, and high uh, because of, you know, what the benefits are. But every, but you can focus on what the lowest one is anyway. And you can say that no matter what, that's the lowest that somebody would have. Uh, our monthly for, uh, for employees only is four eighty-two. Uh, Town of Orange is four eighty. Um, and they, and they go up. And again, I've got these, uh, on a, on electronic document for you. Uh, we have the cheapest. Um, the family plans, employee and family, on the low plan here is at that one thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Town of Orange is twelve ninety-six. Uh, Green County is one thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars. Louisa, one thousand three hundred fifteen. Spotsy is one thousand five hundred and thirty-three. Uh, Culpeper County, again, they're at one thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars, so they're twelve dollars more than we are a month. The difference isn't what the total monthly cost is. The difference is the percentages that the counties pay. Uh, Orange County pays the same amount irregardless of whether you're an employee or a family all the way through. Pretty much, it's the same, four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, that brings us, when you look at the employee-only portion of the health insurance, Orange County is paying ninety-five point eight percent of the employee-only insurance. Like I said, one wonderful, uh, situation if you're a single employee. But when you get to the employee and the family, Orange County pays forty-two point seven percent of the total cost. The Town of Orange, who has a higher cost policy than we do, uh, they pay, uh, eighty-five percent of the total cost of the health insurance. Green County, who is three hundred dolla- almost three hundred dollars more than us monthly, they pay seventy-eight percent of the total cost of the insurance. Uh, Louisa County, t- about two hundred dollars more than us, they pay fifty-three point five percent. And Spotsavani County pays eighty-eight point six percent. Uh, Culpeper, again, is at fifty-two point seven oh percent, but they're still ten percent more than we are. When you're talking about the monthly pay for an employee, a, a family with the lowest health insurance here in Orange County pays six hundred sixty dollars and forty-nine cents a month. That's what the family pays in the lowest plan. Town of Orange, employee pays one hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents. That's almost five hundred dollars. It's four hundred fifty dollars difference. Green County pays three hundred and ten dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars less. Uh, Louisa County pays six hundred and ten dollars, so they're actually a little bit more. Uh, but remember, they're also at fifty-three percent. Their policy is higher than ours. Spotsavani County, they, their employees pay a hundred seventy-four dollars. Culpeper County pays five hundred fifty-one dollars. So I didn't end it there, uh, because those are all numbers that you can throw out there. Uh, but it's kinda hard to see what the impact is. And when we were talking about the bi-weekly pay that we're getting ready to go to, uh, when you talk about monthly cash flow, it was, it's kinda confusing, I think, to some people. I know it was to me. So I sat down and tried to figure out what it meant to me monthly. What does it do for me on paying my bills? Um, so I did a number of sheets for each one of those. Basically says if an Orange County deputy leaves for, how does their pay increase? Um, and I did a, uh, I did a chart uh, to try and demonstrate that. Uh, on this chart, basically, if you take the yearly difference in salary plus the money they save just on the health insurance, that's, that's the two benefits. Most everything else seems to track pretty close together. So this would be the increased take-home money monthly based on salaries, the increased salary in the health insurance that you save by going to these other jurisdictions. If an Orange County deputy leaves and goes to Culpeper Sheriff's Office, uh, on the lowest health plan, uh, they will have a hundred and six, a hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents more in their pocket every month. Uh, that, that's, uh, pretty decent figure. Louisa Sheriff's Office, if we leave, uh, they, uh, would make two hundred and thirty dollars and nine cents more a month. Orange Police Department, if an Orange County deputy leaves us, goes to the Orange Police Department and, uh, gets starting pay, they would make six hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents more a month. A month. Uh, Green County, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars more a month. Spotsavani County, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars more a month. And when you look at it on a yearly basis, you're looking at the low, Culpeper Sheriff's Office, uh, the difference yearly take home is two thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. The high is Spotsavani County with eleven thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. Uh, Green County, which I I've been focusing on a little bit, uh, theirs is nine thousand one hundred forty-six dollars a month. That is in their pockets for them to spend, I mean, a year, for them to spend. Um, I focus on Green because Green County Sheriff's Office is, out of all of these, we certainly would never ask you all to compete with Spotsavani County. Uh, Orange County can't compete with Spotsavani County when it comes to businesses and tax base and and all of that, and I would never ask you to do that. But Green County Sheriff's Office is fairly close to us, uh, by, uh, not necessarily, um, the number of deputies, because we actually have more deputies than they do. Uh, but by the area and the configuration and the fact that they're a neighboring county. Uh, the fact that, that, uh, we have, we have, uh, been told that they have actively recruited several of our people. Um, I don't know that their tax base is any better than ours, uh, but seven hundred sixty-two dollars a month is a lot of money. Um, depending.
Mike, if I may make sure I understand, the, the, and using the green example, the seven sixty-two, that is uh, an insurance difference as well as the starting pay difference. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it family? It's not just employee only?
It's family.
It's family, okay.
Yes, it's family. When you look, when you look at employee only, uh, Orange County pays ninety-five percent. Um, Town of Orange is eighty-five percent across the board. Doesn't matter whether it's just the employee or the employee and the family. Uh, Green County pays ninety-eight percent of the employee. Um, Louisa County pays eighty-eight percent of the employee. Uh, Spotsy pays a hundred percent of the employee. The employee side of it isn't really the problem. Uh, we, we have a pretty good, we have a pretty good record, I think, with retaining single folks, honestly. Uh, people that, that we recruit, we hire them, uh, we train them, uh, we get them in uniforms. Uh, they're here for several years under the contracts that they sign. Um, and then they get married and they have children. Uh, and their insurance goes from twenty dollars a month to six hundred and sixty dollars a month, frankly. Um, so you have the increase in the child, uh, plus you have the increase in the insurance, and it ends up being a rather large hit. Um, from a, a single person's perspective or or from an employee's perspective here at the county, you know, there, there's a lot of things. I, I came here originally, uh, to work, I was working for the state when I started. Uh, I came to work here for a man who was sheriff that I respected and and I cared about and still do to this day. Um, he inspired me for a lot of what I did and what, and what I do, uh, in the years that I've been here. But sometimes that loyalty isn't everything. Sometimes you gotta look out for your family as well. And if it means that you gotta change jobs and go to a neighboring county, uh, and, uh, get more money, you may not want to leave where you're at, but sometimes you will because you gotta do what you gotta do to take care of your family, and that's kinda what we're running into.
Can, can you give me some, I'm not looking for exact numbers, but of the, uh, of, of your staffing, about how many are s- single versus how many have families? Many is it half and half or, I'm just looking for an order of magnitude feel really at this point.
We have had, I would say, right now, we just hired, uh, some more people. Um, I would say probably, right now currently, we're probably a little bit more married with children than we are single employees.
So it's a substantial fraction of the, of your.
Sure.
Probably sixty, forty.
And we.
That's, that's what I'm looking for, okay.
And we've had.
That's a guess.
Yeah, I understand. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, get some feel for it.
And several of those recently were married and had children. Um, and so, uh, the, the increases in the health insurance and then the normal costs, and look, I, I realize that having children is part of life and it's a choice that we make, uh, to some extent. Um, but I think it's a natural progression of things. And, uh, to not be able to retain people that we've trained, we've recruited, trained and hired, uh, is, comes at a con- uh, substantial cost to the county.
What is your, uh, uh, retention rate? I mean, uh, what percentage of people are you losing each year?
Well, that's hard, that's hard to answer because some you get rid of on your own and some leave on their own.
Well, I mean, yeah.
La- la- last year, last year we lost one to Culpeper County for six thousand dollars more a year. Uh, we lost one to Spotsavani County for five thousand dollars more a year.
We're getting ready to lose a very, very good man who really, really in his heart does not wanna leave, but he's going to state police probably. Um, soon as the background's done. Uh, he's one of our sergeants, um, with a new child. We have had several, um, deputies tell us from other jurisdictions that they would love to come to work for us, but the pay and the benefits just aren't there. Uh, a couple of them from Stafford, a couple of them from Spotsavani. As a matter of fact, two of the ones that we lost for six more thousand dollars, I'm hearing, wanna come back to us, but can't because of the money.
And you may not be able to, to answer this, but if we can, we can find out is the, the, uh, situation in, in Green and Culpeper and the like. Are they, are the deputies, or actually, let me see, are the sheriff's department employees uh, under the same rules as the rest of the county in all those situations, or are there special revisions for the deputies and and the other sheriff employees? Do we, we can find that out.
Yeah, I have.
What do, what do you mean?
Yeah, well.
Oh, they pay differently.
Oh, no, they, everybody.
It was all, it's all the same. Okay. I assumed it was, but I.
Ba- basically, um, most counties are under a comp board system.
Right.
And then county supplement. Now, some counties might supplement different than others, but I'm not sure.
Benefits. So like, if we changed your benefits, we, it would be for all county.
For everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't even look at that, honestly. Um, I was trying to compare apples to apples as much as I could.
No, no, I, I stand for the, the.
The information you gathered is, is county-wide. So if Culpeper County does that for the sheriff's office, you work in the treasurer's office, you get the same.
Right.
Pay towards your insurance.
Can, you mentioned comp board. Do, do you, have you looked at the differential in terms of the local, uh, piece of the comp board? Numbers?
The, the comp board is, pays twenty, out of a thirties, what is the starting salary, thirty-something?
For us, thirty-five, one thirty-five.
I wanna say comp board is somewhere around twenty-nine of that thirty-some thousand.
And it's, it's not gonna be different in those other jurisdictions.
The comp board, comp board here pays the exact same in Culpeper does.
Right.
For a starting deputy.
The, I think the only one who, who might make different would be the sheriff, uh, because the sheriff, the sheriff is based on population, but not the deputies.
And how many deputies you get paid is based too. So like, you may, if, if something else factor in, those other counties might be also picking up other positions and fully funding them. And, and we may not be doing that as well, so.
You all do fully fund some of our positions.
Right, but I'm saying, um, comp board bases it on population, how many positions you get.
One position, thirty, fifty hundred people.
That, just because I know it's something you and I've talked about before, you want, would like more positions that would be fully funded. So that is even something else that is not being factored in with here either.
As, as, as far as an overall expense for the sheriff's department, if you're looking at the other counties, how many of them, uh, have extra beyond, beyond the comp board allowance in terms of, uh, of number of people?
All of them? All of them have more.
Saying that they have a lot more, they have a few more. Uh, where do we, where do we pay, you know, in, in terms of percentage of
County funded versus.
Right.
Uh, versus, uh, what the other counties are. I mean, it's, it's not, I, I realize that it doesn't deal with an individual, but it does deal with the overall county cost.
Yeah, I'm not, not sure of that.
Yeah, I, I have not looked into that. I know they all have positions, so then it comes down to percentages essentially.
I mean, uh, because that, uh, if you're, if you, you know, how many of our, uh, of our positions are fully funded and how many are, uh, comp?
We have, we have two, we have two patrol units that are funded by the county, the two traffic units.
And we also have two school resource officers.
We have two school resource officers that are as well.
Okay, so it's four out of how many?
And there's a couple court positions, one or two court positions, I think, are funded by the county without looking, I can't really tell you.
Though looking at the numbers, so you're looking at six out of forty sworn?
Forty, yeah, forty-two, maybe, forty, forty-two.
So, uh, roughly fifteen percent?
Probably. One of the important factors that Mike hadn't brought up, but he probably will if I let him keep talking, but I'll bring it up just to remind him. Um, the big importance of the retention. Um, him and I have been here forever. We know the majority of the bad people in this county. And when a crime hits, the.
You know who to go. You know where to look.
The name, right. And the longer a deputy stays here, the longer he gets that knowledge. We solved a murder case ten years ago.
Oh, gosh.
Bas- based several years ago.
Five, five years ago?
Based on the knowledge of a deputy sheriff who had been here long enough to realize he had seen a car matching the description of the one we were looking for several weeks prior.
And he knows who's fighting with each other and stuff like that.
That, that's the importance of the.
And who's, and who's related. Uh, one, I think you, you, you probably just received the documents that I sent. One of them I did is got replacement costs for a deputy. So if we hire, and, and I base this on an untrained person, but I'm gonna tell you, in my experience, uh, when you talk about certified deputies, it depends on where they come from, on, on what their benefit is to some extent. Um, for example, a lot of people that are floating around that are certified, uh, that are floating around currently now, there's a reason why they're floating around currently and they're certified people. Um, there, there's usually a reason for that. Uh, the difference in that is, sometimes you're gonna have people that change for one reason or another. We, we, we have just gotten through, we're gonna be hiring a guy on Monday, uh, who's coming from another jurisdiction. He's taken a lar- rather large pay cut to come here because he wants to live in Orange and his family lives in Orange. Um, he is unique amongst the masses, believe me. Um, so for the most part, when you talk about certified people, you're talking about there's problems unless they're political refugees for one reason or another. Uh, the thing that I did is a replacement cost for deputy sheriffs, uh, and I broke it down, uniforms, vests. Um, these are all things that we cannot share back out. Um, these are all things that we cannot share back out, uh, with anybody else. Uniforms, we try to, I have a closet full of them. I try and save money by washing them and handing them out whenever I can instead of buying new. Uh, but if you look, there's a nineteen-week academy, it costs the county twelve thousand eight hundred dollars in, um, salary alone. Uh, one, one week of court security, which we require all our people to do. Uh, all of our people that are sworn are cross-trained, and they're all able to do multiple jobs in the agency depending on what the need is. Uh, there's a four-week field training process, which is what FTO is. Uh, so I've added up those salaries, I've also added up the county's portion of health insurance as you pay now. And as you can see, when you get to the bottom of it all, you're looking at twenty thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents to train a deputy. Uh, to put him out on the street with no knowledge of what's going on, except what we've just taught him. Uh, he does not, he and she, he or she, doesn't at that point have the knowledge of what's the best way to pull a fingerprint in this situation. What's the best way to talk to or interrogate somebody? All of those sorts of things come out through the learning process. That comes out as you do, and as you do, uh, that is the sorts of things that, that we rely on. Um, at the bottom of it, I put institutional knowledge is priceless, and that's exactly what the sheriff's talking about. And that's just one, that's just one example, honestly. Uh, num- uh, a couple of years ago, we had a case with some churches that were broke into. Uh, the investigator that was on it, uh, had identified a particular person as possibly being the one. Um, I received a phone call and I was able to say, go talk to this guy, ask him this and this and this, look at his truck, look at his hands. Uh, believe everything he says and leave, go interview exactly where he said he's gonna be, and it's gonna be a lie, and then you get your search warrant and the guy will confess. And it happened exactly like that. Um, we had a, we had a case of the break-in of gas and stuff. Uh, it was a car with no license plate on the front of it. Uh, we saw that because a deputy had stopped the car with no license plate on the front of it several months before, knew who was driving the car. Uh, so we're able to do that. That's the kinda knowledge that we have to keep, uh, because those are the things that help make the community safer. The quicker we can solve those types of crimes and get those people off the street, the safer we are, and we have, we can only do that by retaining folks.
Could you look at your, uh, for the last few years and say, uh, how many people you've lost? One, those that you wanted to get rid of, and how many that you wanted to keep, but, but left either for, uh, for other reasons?
We, we had seven at one time last year, uh, due to retirements, uh, and then three, one started a taxi service. Um, and then we had two, cause he thought he was gonna make more money.
I would just look over the last few years and just, just give me some, some numbers, I'm sure you've got those in terms of that.
We can put it, we can put that together. Yes, sir.
And, and we're not here to ask you to do everything we're at, we're, we're presenting, we're presenting to you a problem that we have. And we're asking you to start fixing it.
And, and given the fact that the experience is important, I'd like to get a sense of how much you're losing in terms of experience because, uh, uh, because people are going out there.
Yes, sir.
That would be useful, I think, to understand.
Yeah.
The other thing I think we should understand is that, are there any glaring differences in the coverage? You talked about the lowest, uh, coverage, you know, is that, does that compare more or less to. The same, uh, type of coverage in the other jurisdictions? It sounds like you think it probably does.
It's, I'm not an insurance, I'm not, I'm not an insurance expert, uh, by any means, but, um. For, for the most part, they each have deductibles, they appear to be in line. Um, I, I wouldn't think, I'd be surprised if there's any big glaring differences. Their, their policies cost more than ours. That, that's the thing, the total cost monthly is higher than ours are. Um, so if anything, I would think they might, theirs might be a little better. I think theirs costs more because of the areas that they live in, frankly. Um, Green County's probably looking at Charlottesville and some of those places for doctor's fees where we might be doing a little bit different. Uh, but all of theirs were more. Um, you know, I, I'd hate to be in your folks' shoes, honestly, because there's a lot that needs to be done. I think we brought to you, talking about CIP, we brought to you police cars that, that we need. Um, well, we've got a bunch of them, and, and old cars over a hundred thousand miles cost us more to maintain than cars that are under. Um, I've put some stuff together for that, you, you've seen it in the CIP, I'm sure we'll be talking about it during the budget process. Um, I know that fire rescue has needs, uh, I know that public works has needs. Um, the, the difference, and I, and I hope you understand, for the employee, uh, at the desk or behind the wheel of the car. Or that's running the, the fire truck or the ambulance at the time, uh, last year, we weren't gonna get a raise. Um, I think there was a savings overall in the county budget that allowed a, a two percent increase for employees. Um, for somebody with a family, and I can only tell you from my perspective, uh, for me with a family, and I have the high insurance. Um, I got roughly ten to twenty dollars a month was, was my increase from my two percent, uh, raise from last year. Um, it's not what the raise is, it's what it ends up being that's kind of important. And I dare say that my gas and my electricity, all the gases down now, thank goodness, but, um, the, the other things that cost me money have probably gone up. More than ten or fifteen dollars a month, so, I, I hope, I hope you would take that into account. Uh, I don't, I don't come here with demands, and I'm not slamming my hand against the table or, uh, telling you folks how to do your jobs. Cause you, you know your jobs better than I do. Uh, I just try to point out the problems so you can understand that it is. I try to come to you as a longtime employee here, so you can understand that, um, I, I think it's a, I think it's a big problem. Uh, I think the sheriff does as well, and all I can do is ask you all to, to try and do what you can to, to help fix it. At least alleviate it. I don't think we need to be the highest paying, uh, county around. But I think we gotta, I think it would be better to be in the middle of the pack than at the bottom. Um.
It's a sys- it's a systemic problem with, um, many of the, the public safety and, and other positions as well. We can have similar instances in E nine one one, in firing EMS, in, in planning and, and, um, some of the administrative functions too. So it's, it's definitely something worth, um, consideration and worth some, some thought. The, the typical workforce member is one and a half times the salary for somebody that leaves before a year as, uh, the, um, sheriff. And Mike has done a, a great job of trying to find some of those for you, but I can assure you that, um, this might be specific to the sheriff's office. But it's more than this, just from the recruitment, the life productivity with vacancy and those things as well.
Well, the, the other concern I have is that the, the insurance part of this issue is one that is in a state of. You know, chaos, to, to put it nicely.
That's true.
Uh, and so I, you know, how that's gonna settle out, I mean, it's certainly not gonna get any better, I'm not suggesting that. Uh, but how to deal with that and how that's gonna settle out is something that none of us can predict at this point, so. We'll just have to see how it. Yeah, how, how that.
I, I think this job would be a mess. Now, one thing that I did do, uh, as, as a young game warden when I started. The sergeant that I had at the time told me not to bring in problems, but to bring in some solutions as well. Um, I, I can't say that I've got a complete solution, I gave you what I thought. Uh, I put a question mark at the end of it for a possible solution, and I pointed some things out in there. Uh, such as my sergeant, our sergeants basically receive six hundred dollars more a year than a starting deputy in Green. That's, I think that's, that's important, uh, so I did put that in there. But one of the things that we recently did, as you're aware, we changed our merit scale. Uh, we, we asked your permission, we changed how we evaluate employees. Now, I think it needs to be tweaked a little bit still. Uh, based on the numbers, cause I think I was rated on ninety different categories. Um, so how many, how many, it was, how, how many, how many fours out of ninety do you have to get before you can, before you can get to, uh, exceeds expectations? But anyway, um, I, I think it needs to be tweaked a little bit, but there was one, there was a reason behind that when I, when I first suggested it. One of them was because I wanted to see employees get paid, get evaluated the same way and based on their jobs, which the old way wasn't doing. But the other thing that it would do for us is, if you look at the current county's pay scale. It gives you a starting pay, it gives you a mid-range, and it gives you a high, uh, the maximum, and that's all it provides for. Uh, so it basically helps us to give people starting salaries, and it gives us an idea of where to slot people when they have some experience when they come in. And it says when we're not gonna give them, uh, certain raises once they hit the maximum level, but it doesn't really do anything in between. And so I think, and I, I don't know how you all feel about this, uh, but I know it's been since two thousand and five that the job categories were evaluated. Here based on all of that. Well, as a part of this solution, I think it might be helpful if you take those pay grades. And you start breaking them down into two percent increments, uh, throughout. So instead of a chart that has three numbers, you create a chart that looks like this, except there's a bunch of pages and it's about this long. That takes you all the way through. And so as people are evaluated on their jobs, depends on how many steps they get as far as an increase goes for the year. That wouldn't be based on cost of living increases, that would be based on merit. If you were then gonna adjust to try and keep us within a certain balance of everybody else. Uh, then you could do a cost of living increase that would affect the entire chart to keep us in the middle. Cause I think that's where we need to be. I don't know that we need to be at the top, I'd love to be paid at the top. But I think if we're in the middle, uh, it gives us a lot better chance at retention. Uh, if we do that, then we're rewarding employees who are working harder and exceeding and excelling. And you're gonna get that based on the merits that we just provided to you, uh, in this past year. I think fire and rescue did something similar. Um, so I provided you with a, with a chart as a, as a suggestion. Uh, and basically, if you get an unsatisfactory value, you get nothing. Under the old system, if you were satisfactory employee, you got nothing from a merit raise. But do we really not wanna reward good productive employees, even if they're satisfactory employees, they're doing what we're asking them to do? Uh, you just reward them less than you would people who are exceeding and who are outstanding. And so my suggestion would be to create those steps, use those steps in the merit process, and when somebody maxes out, they're maxed out. And they have to get a promotion to start back at the, back in the scale someplace else again, in order to be, uh, available to that. And then for the board to take the opportunity every three or five years to figure out what the salaries are and for the region itself around us. And use a cost of living increase every three or five years in order to try and keep us in the middle. Cause that's where, really where we need to stand. We don't really wanna get to be really bad, because then it costs more. In one fell swoop to bring us back to where we need to go, instead of doing things, uh, gradually, uh, as it goes. And I think, I think this would be one potential answer to it, so it was just making, making a potential suggestion, so.
Well, you're all in the same boat that we are, you take the money you have and allocate it to the best of your abilities, so.
Yes, sir. I think last year, my budget provided for a three percent increase for all sheriff's office employees, and only increased our budgets one and a half percent. Um, eventually, we didn't get the three percent increase. Uh, I still had the one point five percent increase, uh, out of it. So I ended up with, uh, reduction in the overall budget, I guess, and then later we got to two percent. So, I tried to build it in last time, but because not everybody did, uh, we didn't get the three percent, so. Um, we're try, trying every, every way I can to try and figure it out. I try to be frugal with y'all's money as much as I possibly can, because it belongs to the taxpayer. And I think they want us to be watching how much things cost and, uh, how to do things more efficiently, so we're certainly trying to look for that.
Mike, I think one of the things that you did well, um, obviously, first let me say thank you for providing this information for us. And I think the fact that you took the initiative to do it, um, says a lot, and I appreciate y'all doing that. Cause I'm sure it took you a little bit of time to compile all of this, so, um, the level of commitment that you have for your staff. Um, to advocate for them, you know, should be commended. Um, the other thing that is important is, as I'm sitting here thinking about it. Um, you know, when you talk about your turnover and what it actually costs you when you lose someone. It's hard to put a price tag on something that you don't know who you're gonna lose, but when you break it down and you say, you know, this is what it costs me. To get someone in and to train them, and, and while, um, they sign a contract to, to stay with you for X amount of time. Depending upon their trainings, you know, it, as it, that cost is prorated out. How many years before you're actually really getting your return back on your investment? And it, and it, depending upon their training, it, it takes longer to get that return back. So if you've got somebody using your K nine, for an example, and, you know, with what happened with you all there. And, and the amount of training that you put into that, and then they leave, oh, and by the way, the dog goes too. If you take that and you divide that money out. That's, that's the increase in your salaries, I, what I hear you saying. So we're paying it already, put it. What I hear you saying is put it where it makes the most sense, and we actually get that priceless return back. And that is the experience and, um, overall, at the end of the day, the public safety that you can't put a price tag on. And, um, because if you have one less victim, you know, that's one less trickle effect going down. So, um, thank you for, for taking the time and doing this and explaining why, why it's insignificant to you and to your office. And, and what you are actually overall trying to do. And it's not just about money, which ultimately is, but it, it's not about that. It, it's about something that we all care about, and that's living in a community where we feel safe. And are able to do the things that, that we, that we enjoy doing without the worry of, um, you know, bad people. So thank you for doing that and taking the time to come and show it to us. I actually appreciate when other constitutional officers do what you all did.
Yeah, the other thing I think that we're, that we're hearing is that you, you, you don't have all the tools that you need to, uh, deal with the staff. That you want to have and do have in terms of rewarding them, retaining them, a- and the like, that, that, you know. Some of the tools are either missing or not sufficient at this point to, to, to do what you know needs to be done.
Some of the tools just aren't funded.
I'm, I'm.
We have, we have a process for merit increases, they haven't.
You're exactly correct on that. That's why we, and I'm gonna brag a little bit, but I'm hoping I'm not bragging too much. We try to make it a good working environment just to keep people there. And I, I think we've succeeded overall for that, where you're not, you're never gonna complete, everybody because of that.
Sure.
Um, but overall, we, we, we try to keep people the best worker in the industry.
And that's an important tool, but it's, it's a tool.
Right, but it's not the tools that you're speaking of.
When we, when we interview people for jobs, uh, we, we often tell them, you know, there's a difference between us and Spotsavany County. And the difference is, my sheriff knows everybody that works for us. Uh, I can't say that, and I know the sheriff of Spotsavany County, I consider him a friend, I like him a lot, I don't know that he knows everybody. I don't know that he gets to see them as much as my sheriff gets to see us. Um, it, we have a little bit of that sort of family atmosphere, uh, in our office. And that's worth a certain ma- amount, don't, don't get me wrong, that's, that's worth a certain amount. The problem is, when you have these other jurisdictions like Green, that's paying to start almost what my sergeants are making. And you get guys here and they start to struggle a little bit, trying to pay their monthly bills and provide for their families. And they see that grass may be greener on the other side, some of them go, uh, because they think they're benefiting their family, even though they don't wanna leave us. Uh, we've had, we've had several tearful goodbyes, uh, with people who are leaving for more money. And when they get over there and they realize, you know, the grass isn't always greener, and the money isn't always worth all the extra that you might get. Um, then, by then, it's too late to come back, uh, because they're used to the extra money. I, I took a four thousand dollar pay cut from the game department to come work for Bill Faulkner when he was sheriff here. Um, I did it, but I was single. The only ones I had to feed were me and my dog, and I was the hardest to feed out of the two. Um, and I did it then because I knew I could afford it. Uh, it, it's a little bit different when you have a wife and children, uh, or you have a husband and children. And, uh, and I guess that that's kinda the part we try to get across. Uh, the more turnover, and we can look at our turnover figures, but, but I wanna say, there is an additional to that. And the additional to that is, just, and I, I've been picking on Green, but I'm not picking on Green County Sheriff or, or that office in general. Uh, but how much they pay, uh, is a big difference. But if Green County Sheriff's Office were to, it were to, um, have a lot of turnover over a certain period of time. And they can pick up certified people, uh, that are good people, that are trying to make more money, which is normally one of the things that you look for. Then they could be rating us.
And they don't have to pay the, as much in terms of training.
Nope, they can take them in, they can put them through a two, three-week field training process, and they give them a car and they turn them loose. And those counties allow their people to take their cars home into Orange County. All of the jurisdictions that I've said, with the exception of Orange Police Department, have take-home car policies. And we have people from those counties, I think you've probably seen their cars in our county before parked, uh, cause they allow them to drive. So it's not only based on our turnover, sometimes our turnover is based on who else is trying to hire at the time, and how much different they pay than we do.
Then every couple of years, when you have a sheriff selection, you also.
Well, you know, I gotta say, the sheriff, the sheriff selection sure is a, uh, sure is a difficult thing to swallow. Uh, when you got people coming, and I, I've, I've, I've been fortunate because I've lasted, I've lasted over time. Um, but there's a lot of people who haven't over time, and, uh, so that's, that's another, you know, that's a, that's another thing, but.
There actually are, and I'm. There actually are, and I'm not trying to throw a sympathy thing out here, but there are actually deputy sheriffs that qualify for food stamps. Um, and we have a couple that, I know we have one. I think we have two that are on it, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Get us up to thank.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, thank you.
I like your idea about stuff, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And again, I don't want y'all to think we're here to try to pull all of this out to fix it all right now. I'm just asking you to start the waters if you would.
Well, it, it, it forces us not only that, but throughout the county.
Thank you. I did, I'm glad I did just now.
Okay. Four thirty. Uh, let's go back then to where we left off on the regular agenda. Uh, which would be public appearances, the service awards.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have service awards for November and December, um, being presented today. We have. I'm not sure if they're all attending, I don't know who's out in the hall, but we do have, um. Two for December attending, one is David Allen Hooser, fifteen years, part-time E nine one one communications officer. He is not attending at the moment and Janet Jones, ten years in planning and zoning.
Forever now.
Hey, Tim, hey, Teal, take, take the sticky note off of that for the.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't see Noah Madden, but he's been here five years. He's a firefighter medic. And then we also have Karen Spencer, five years, Gordon Barber, childcare teacher. She is a. And the last person on the list is Roger Dale Wilson, ten years. He's a lieutenant with Fire EMS and I don't see him attending either.
Okay, that would take us into the Lake Anna Advisory Committee Annual Report. Welcome, Mr. Lim.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Before I get started on my very small piece, I'd like to congratulate the Sheriff's Department. On a very professional and outstanding presentation. In my previous life, I had to deal with designing and building compensation systems for large organizations. And as I was listening to him, I was ticking off, make sure you say this, make sure you say that. He got him off. So once again, congratulations. But that's not why I'm here. Um, thank you for allowing me a place on your agenda. Um, I'm Larry Zentke. I'm the newly elected head of, uh, Chair of the Lake Anna Advisory Committee. Mr. White is my co- my Vice Chair. And our job is to raise issues and deal with, uh, issues that, that reflect, uh, on our various county or, excuse me, organizations. And as they affect the lake. So I'm really here tonight for, or this afternoon for four reasons. First off to report out who we are and what we're doing. Second, to show you how we are saving you money. Uh, so you can spend it on your police, um, and then to identify some shortfalls and then to seek your, your input. And. Thank you. Some of you may know this better than I, if you've, uh, been involved in board business before. Uh, the Lake Anna Advisory Committee, or LAC as we call it, uh, was started to foster a tri-county approach to deal with issues related to Lake Anna. Members of LAC include members of the individual boards of supervisors, as I mentioned, Mr. White. And, uh, local residents appointed by, appointed to LAC by their respective boards. As well as representatives of Dominion Power, which is responsible for the building of the lake. Parts of the special area plan, which was written in two thousand, have been included in the Spotsylvania and Louisa comprehensive plans. The Orange Comprehensive Plan recognizes the size of the watershed feeding into the lake, which is about twenty-three percent. We maintain and expect to manage a hydrola fund for the time when this or other invasive, uh, weeds regain a foothold. Into Lake Anna. Public involvement is beginning to increase and as we begin looking at the, especially as we look at the issues which I'll be talking about later.
You mentioned, uh, the special area plan. What, what is it, uh, covers it? What's that cover?
Uh, it was, it talked about how to maintain the, uh, the lake and the watershed issues that were. Beginning to be developed, uh, at that point in time. Clearly it was, uh, um, I'm not, and I'm not sure on this, but I wasn't, uh, part of LAC in two thousand. But I, I suspect it was part of how the comprehensive plans for the various counties began to. Wrap their arms around issues related to the lake. And in particular, for Orange, I've got two slides on that later on. Uh, you would see, uh, how you, uh, use your agricultural, um, zones. To, uh, to try to maintain and preserve input into the lake. And I'm sure for other reasons as well.
So, so even though the, the parts of that special area plan are not in our comp plan. The fact that we're recognizing with regard to the watershed is, is satisfactory?
Oh, yes.
That, that is the, probably the single biggest issue from an Orange perspective because that. Our share of the lake is quite small compared to both Louisa and Spotsylvania, uh, but we do have an impact from, from the water standpoint because of the watershed.
Yeah, I've, I've got a map, uh, a little bit later on, I'll, I'll pass out to you. I didn't have time to put it into the, uh, into the presentation. But it shows the number of water quality test sites, uh, around the lake and that two of them are for sure in, in your waters. Okay, so, um, did I answer your, your question?
That's fine, that's good.
In terms of our objectives, uh, this is the busiest slide and, uh, I'm sure I can leave that to, to you to read at a later date. Um, broadly, we're responsible for cooperation among the four main partners, Spotsylvania, Louisa, Orange and Dominion. Recommend, we're responsible for recommending, uh, issue, uh, recommendations addressing the lake and its watershed. Promoting planning and management, then more specifically maintaining the on-lake marker system, uh, navigational buoys and so on. And eradic- eradicating undesirable aquatic weeds. Uh, one of the issues Lake Anna faced early on in its existence was, uh, an invasion of a weed called Hydrola. Which covered entire acres of surface and made, uh, navigation and recreation impossible. In essence, we're in business to be a voice for the lake. What we're doing currently, and to be more specific, the, uh, we have a dock sign program which started, uh, uh, last year. This allows nine one one dispatch to, uh, to more quickly, uh, route early responders to scenes of accidents or distress. Uh, when they're called in and it.
Larry, if I might make your comment about that for the, for the board's benefit, it, it very frequently happens that people. That are on the, the lake that are not familiar with the lake, they live elsewhere. And they have an emergency and they call nine one one and they can't describe where they are. They're, I'm on the water.
Yeah, I'm stuck.
And, and that's a problem. And unlike nine one one addresses that we have in the county and so forth. And so this program and, and a couple of the other buoy programs are really to help our nine one one responders in the three counties. Figure out how to provide service and to locate the people. So that's.
I like that idea.
This, that's where.
And, and it's entirely. Well, it's entirely voluntary as well on the, uh, for, for lakeside owners and, uh, it doesn't cost the counties anything. Other than to, uh, to redirect their, uh, their GPS on their nine one one, uh, response systems, so.
And I believe Louisa's actually managing the database to, to, uh, coordinate the nine one one addresses and the like.
It's, it's one of the things we're proud of. We're also making our funds work harder for us. Uh, we just finished laddering our, uh, CDs for our Hydrola funds. So that we, uh, would be able to capitalize on higher than the dot O two percent, um, return we're able to get, uh, today in the outstanding financial marketplace. We find ourselves in. Uh, we're, so we're able to do much better now with, with that. Um, we're, uh, or we've organized a volunteer effort for bui- uh, for buoy maintenance. Uh, so that we're not asking for any capital dollars, uh, for anyone. I've, I've got more on that later on. We're also acting as a conduit for Louisa County, who's decided to, uh, fund water quality testing through LAC. As opposed to donating money directly to LACA, the Lake Anna Civic Association, which actually does the water quality testing. And, and that makes it easier for Louisa and it makes it easier for LACA as well. We're also monitoring state efforts to improve child safety on the lake. You'd be surprised to know that, uh, Lake Anna is the only lake in the state. Uh, that is exempt from the federal law stating that children under thirteen must wear life preservers. Why that is? Yeah. We, we, I, I have, uh, some thoughts on that a little bit later on. Uh, we're also soliciting more, uh, citizen involvement. Our, uh, our last several meetings have been very, very nicely, uh, attended. And we've been getting a lot of additional citizen input.
Say LAC is a governmental agency, has it been targeted by the, uh, counties?
Yes, yes. In, um, nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. Uh, current major issues, uh, the others were just administrative. These are the larger issues that, uh, uh, we're, we're facing and, uh, provide more detail on these as we go along. Uh, I've included in the, uh, you all have copies of the presentation, correct? And you're reading from the notes pages, so. Yeah, but you, but you've got the actual notes pages in front, so you can see the text and so on? Okay, great. Alright, so I don't want, I don't need to read to you the Spotsylvania Comprehensive Plan or the Louisa Comprehensive Plan. Let's, uh, let's move to the next slide. Which talks about Orange existing land use. And, uh, the twenty, the twenty-three percent of the watershed that is, uh, uh, that is part of the lake. You have three fingers, um, um, going into the lake from Orange County, Pumonkey Creek, Terry's Run and Negro's Run. And according to information provided to us by LACA, uh, Lake Anna Civic Association, which has tested waters in conjunction with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. Nearly all the streams in the Orange watershed feed either Pumonkey or Terry's Run. And both these streams are listed by DEQ as impaired for E. coli. Which is bacteria. I've got a map on that later on. Mountain Run, which originates in Gordonsville as a tributary, uh, as a tributary for the North Anna River, which will, which is the southern boundary of your, uh, of your county. Now, if we look at, uh, your comprehensive plan for twenty twenty-five, um, the black line I've added myself. Which shows the, uh, the actual twenty-three percent, if I'm correct, uh, in my interpretation of the watershed. According to LACA, uh, Lake Anna's watershed runs along the border with Louisa to Route thirty-three near Gordonsville. Along Route fifteen into the city of Orange and then along Route twenty to, uh, beyond Unionville to the border with Spotsylvania roughly. Um, according to Virginia DEQ, Pumonkey Creek and Terry's Run are already impaired, again, as for E. coli. But the good news is the, that your long-term planned archi- uh, agricultural use of almost all of the lake watershed in Orange. And the agricultural conservation area established around the three fingers of the lake provide for some prevention. Well. Question?
Taxi, no, it's expanded.
That's what it's all about.
Right. Well, there isn't any bad news. It's safe to say the continued testing of the waters is important to the overall health and safety of the watershed and for the lake itself.
There, the, the, the one piece of bad news potentially is that most of the E. coli is as a result of agricultural uses.
Yes, well, there's, there's that.
So.
I, uh, I don't, I don't want to, um, I, I, I'm not, I'm not here spouting gloom and doom. I think overall we have a, a good, a good picture, a good news story to tell about the lake. Um, the actual harder decisions will come toward the end of the presentation when I start asking for money. Okay, uh, the, uh, water quality testing is performed by both LACA and by DEQ. Um, and, uh, uh, LACA, uh, uh, tests significantly more sites, two of which are in, uh, Orange waters. Dominion tests for the health of the overall fish population. And as, uh, if there were a decrease in fish population, they would, uh, be involved in it as well. There was a database of historical test results online with, uh, the Lake Anna Civic Association. And what we've been finding is lab costs are increasing. Um, LACA has, uh, asked for significant increases of, in funding from both, uh, Spotsylvania and from, uh, for, uh, Louisa. And I'm here, uh, this afternoon to ask for just a small portion, uh, and I've already submitted, uh, budget documentation for that. The, uh, Virginia Department of Health has issued an advisory against eating fish in the lake because of mercury and heavy me- uh, other heavy metals. And PCBs. Um, gizzard shad, which are, they basically get bait fish and I can't think of anybody in the world who would even wanna eat one. Uh, certainly are forbidden, but, uh, the DEQ is, uh, suggesting, um, no more than, um. Uh, once, one meal per month of any other fish caught in the lake. This catches people by surprise quite often. However, that, that is another one of our issues. As stated previously, uh, several streams feeds the lake, uh, from Orange are listed as impaired for E. coli bacteria. Um, Orange is not unique in this regard. All the streams feeding the lake are impaired in one form or another. Uh, we have, uh, we have minerals, uh, washing out from old mining operations and so on. All of which we're trying to deal with to keep the lake a productive, um, source of revenues for tourists and, and so on.
Is that where your, uh, mercury and PCBs are coming from, the old mining activities?
Uh, we had a, uh, a grant several years ago to try to find, find a source and we could not, could not find a source.
Source apparently.
No, um, it is, it is heavily suspected that PCBs float in from Ohio where they're still burning lots of coal. And through rain, come into the lake and, you know, end up on the, uh, on the, on the bottom. Uh, where the, where the gizzard shed eat them and the rest of the fish population suffers.
And it, and I think it's, I don't know if you're gonna point this out, Larry, but it, it, on the E. coli front, the, the lake itself has not tested. Uh, as having high levels of E. coli.
No.
The, it's, it's fine, but the streams that feed it, uh, have tested high. Uh, right now, there's enough flow that the dilution has taken care of the problem by the time it gets to the lake. But there's no guarantee that that will.
But you're having weed problems and so that's, uh, a subject for the nutrients coming in.
Yeah, that's gone away for the moment.
Yeah, the, the Hydrola, uh, situation has, has been resolved. Uh, it's been, been resolved for the last, uh, twelve years. However, the solution, which was a, a special form of fish. Die out after fifteen.
Carb?
Yeah.
That's it.
Right, and so.
Yes, with water.
Uh, well, apparently there are issues with that now, so.
Well, they not, they might not be as sterile as once thought.
Right, well, we're.
For example.
Shades of Jurassic Park. Okay, according to, uh, Friends of Lake Anna, another one of the organizations supporting the lake, there are over three million recreation hours per year spent. On or near the lake. Now, as, uh, Mr. White was saying, uh, many of these people bring their boats from wherever they happen to live. And spend the day cruising around on the lake and when accidents occur, it's liable to be people who only use their boats once or twice a summer. They are unfamiliar with the operation of their own boats. They have no idea what navigation looks like and they will generally run aground, run into a stump, lose a, you know, lower unit. Or just plain will run out of gas in the middle of the lake and who do they call? Yeah, and everybody's got a cell phone, everyone's using nine one one now. But I got a little backwards there. Uh, water withdrawal, this issue we faced earlier, uh, in the year and it's been resolved. Uh, at one point in time, Louisa was, uh, Louisa County Water Authority was petitioning, uh, DEQ for a permit. To withdraw two point seven million gallons per day from the lake. Uh, Dominion, that owns the lake, uh, said, uh, you will not be able to run your water across the twenty-foot buffer. Between the water's edge and the, uh, the end, beginning of, uh, property lines. And so that pretty well killed that unless you can figure out a way of siphoning it off in midair. But, uh, but that issue is pretty much dead. Um, however, it took us about sixty hours worth of work, uh, because there were a lot of people upset. Uh, we were, made a lot of presentations to civic associations and, um, um, um. and POAs, property owners' associations, there we go, to try to calm the troops down a bit. So it became, it became pretty clear pretty quickly that this was not going to be an issue that would fly. It just took a long time for the rumors to go away. Water, however, blue gold, as they say, is going to be an increasing problem as population continues to be, and water continues to be a priority for us going forward in the future.
Do the homes around the lake use septic and drain fields, or is there a sewage system that manages?
It's a combination of both, but they're, but most of the homes around the lake are using septic systems and drain fields. Louisa has a hundred percent reserve requirement, but no pump-out requirement. Spasylvania has the best. Their pump-out requirement is every five years regardless, and as I'll say later, a real good tri-county solution eludes us. Everyone's got their reasons for having things the way they have them, and we'll just have to keep on working on that. A failed drain system can do a lot of damage. We also have two sewage treatment plants right on the water. One is at the two-oh-eight bridge, and the other one is at the Dominion Power Plant. That's a whole nother issue, and we'll talk about that in just a bit.
While you're moving on, the homes in Orange County apparently are primarily on a centralized system, not on a separate individual sewage system. The water is well, but the.
The sewage is.
Sewage is, not all, but the majority of it.
Okay. And here's that slide I was working towards, the wastewater treatment. Earlier in the two thousand eleven, a private contractor who operates the sewage treatment plant at the two-oh-eight bridge asked for an increase in fluent discharge. They were, they are currently, as of today, only discharging about five thousand gallons per day of effluent into the lake from their condominiums and so on. Their new permit allows them ninety-nine thousand gallons per day, and they've announced development plans for a large resort across Route two-oh-eight with hotels and office space and so on. And they're also, at one point in time, are going to truck effluent from the cut-along subdivision further up two-oh-eight down to their sewage treatment plant. Many of those plans are still morphing. However, the permit was granted by the Department of Environmental Quality over the strong objection of a number of civic groups, all the way to the Water Control Board in Richmond, that basically rubber-stamp the DEQ recommendation to proceed. We had no science to back it up. All we have now is a little concern about what's going to happen with all that extra effluent.
Have you looked at the discharge limits of the water versus what the water has already got in it now?
Yes, total maximum daily load, I think, is what you're referring to, which is.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, in terms of that, I look at what the RSA plant down at Lake, the water they put into the, into the stream is cleaner than what is already flowing in it.
Depending upon the type of sewage treatment plant, that could be very true. For an example, I'm getting a little off script here, but for example, a reverse osmosis treatment plant discharges drinkable water. And there, in the state of Virginia, we have, in the Ocoquan area, a working example of that. However, it's a little bit more expensive, and if you were developing a, putting together a development of nine hundred homes or so, that represents a very large capital investment, and there is no financial inducement nor legal inducement for them to do so. They've got to be able to prove to the Department of Environmental Quality that what they're doing won't hurt the lake any more than it's already damaged, which worries me a little bit if I'm to be the voice of the lake. So, we're, that's an issue. We're struggling with it. We don't have any resolution on it. Again, no common approach, but at this point in time, you know, I can't say we've got a major problem. At this point in time, there isn't that much effluent going into the lake downstream. I don't know. And as we get more learned in what contaminants there are, and how they deal with the bottom of the lake, how they circulate in the lake, we may be in a better position. Okay. Any other questions on water treatment? I'm prepared to bore you to death.
For four minutes.
I've got a lot of answers, but I'm sure.
Because you've got, you've got, you've got other people standing behind you. They're ready.
I've only got three or four pages left.
Okay, safety. Navigational markers, like no-wake buoys and hazard buoys, they've been in place for some time, since early in two thousand ten, we began placing them. There are currently ninety-two markers on the lake, twenty-four no-wake, forty hazard, and twenty-eight channel markers. Since the original no-wake buoys were placed around in front of the bridges, except for the two-oh-eight bridge, there have been no more accidents of people running into bridges at night or during the day. I refer back to my argument about people who don't operate their boats very often coming out of the lake and thinking. In two thousand nine, LAC agreed to take over the function, mostly because LAC was beginning to realize that they were, they were at risk should someone hit a buoy and sue, whereas a governmental agency is more protected on that. And so we took over the maintenance of the buoys. LAC had already done all the capital investment, and so now it's just a matter of making sure that what's there stays in working water. Skipping to the, skipping around a little bit in my dialogue here, what we ran into last year was a year without a chair of our maintenance program, and so consequently, there were a number of lighted buoys that failed, a number of buoys got cut loose and started drifting and so on. Our former chairman, Jim Oliver, was able to pull together a volunteer effort, and now we have a donated pontoon boat to act as a platform for maintenance and repair. We have donated storage, and we have volunteers to do the work. What we don't have is money to buy the replacement parts, and that probably tells you more than you need to know at this point. The other, the next issue on safety is boating safety, and. There we go. This is, this refers back to the federal mandate for life preservers for children under thirteen. For every, every year for the last ten years, a legislative, a bill was introduced that died in committee that would allow law enforcement to enforce the federal law on Lake Anna. The only issue I bring to you is that as the legislative session convenes and gets into this year's session, it may, I may be coming back to you and asking you for a resolution to support safety. I'd be doing that with each of the counties. Last but not least, let's talk money. You can see here on this page, the number and types of buoys. There are no, no-wake buoys, no-hazard buoys in Orange waters. There are, however, a number of hazards in Pumonkey and Terry's Run that need to be identified. It's shallow in there. There are rocks, fallen trees, stumps, and so on, and we end up with a lot of recreational boaters. We're worried about something happening at high speed there. And then, of course, the impact on your EMS organization. So what you see there are a total of three buoys. Total replacement cost for that is eleven hundred, but I have the money to take care of that in my budget, leftover from LACCA. All I'm interested in is the two hundred dollars for continued maintenance, and that is part of the budget request I have already submitted to your finance director. And so, I'm not asking for replacement. I'm not asking for brand-new. I think I can fund the capital costs, but I'm going to need some help with the maintenance costs. I think that's a good news story. In terms of water quality testing, twenty-three percent of the watershed, and I'm only asking for five-point-seven percent of the cost. As you can see there, both Spasylvania and Louisa are being asked for eighty-seven hundred dollars for funding for water quality testing, and we're only asking a thousand, you know, here in Orange, for the, for the, for continued testing in your areas. Now, this is the map that I told you about that I unfortunately failed to include in the presentation. Did you pass those on to you? Thank you.
Is that it?
If you look at the map, the two yellow boxes are the two test sites, and those are the places where there is a elevated level of E. coli, and they happen to be in Pumonkey and Terry's Run. If you scan down a little bit further to the right, you'll notice there's a pink circle. That is the closest Department of Environmental Quality test site. And what we never want to have happen is a red zone starting up at the top of the lake and working its way down to the DEQ site, because when DEQ finds E. coli over their acceptable limits, they tend to shut down parts of the waterway, and that has a ripple effect on recreation, housing values, and so on. This is a good news story. As it stands right now, from the latest set of tests, we're doing fine. The lake is doing fine. What we want to make sure is that we continue doing fine. This is, this is prevention. This is early warning and detection.
However, Larry, if you, if you back upstream on both Terry's and Pumonkey, and I believe the same is true for Negro, but certainly for Pumonkey and Terry's, you will find sites, several, that at certain times of the year are orange and even red.
Yes.
They're testing, there's about a half a dozen sites upstream. By the time it gets to the lake, it's fine, but upstream, there are several sites that are way above the limit.
Having lots of rain helps. A dry spell, that's when things get bad. There's a lot of argument as to how the lake responds, how water circulates. When the water is high, the surface current is high, and a lot goes wash down over the dam and dilutes, right. When water is low, like it was several years ago, and it was down four feet, the water tends to circulate like a bowl, and everything down lake goes up lake, everything up lake goes down lake, and then things really get bad. So, basically, at this point, that concludes my comments, other than to say, do you have any other questions, and is there something we could be doing for you on LAC? I'll take that as wild acceptance.
Very nice president.
Thank you very much, and I apologize to the rest of you for taking so much time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that brings us to the point in time when joint meeting with the school board.
I'm going to take about five minutes.
That works. We'll take a five-minute break, give y'all a chance to open up the public comment, because there's nobody signed up. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Public comment is closed now.
I'd like to call this school board meeting work session to agenda to order. Head role call, please.
Mr. Gladbach?
Mrs. Carter? Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
Madam Chairman, I certify the questions of the board.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for approval of the work session agenda?
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
A second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent, we will turn it over to Dr. Bob.
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Sumbs, and members of the boards, my pleasure to see and to work with Matt Benefield to provide you all with some information during these first thirty minutes that will then allow you to have some conversation back and forth with the school board about implications and thoughts about where we would go in the future. It's not the intention of the school board to make any decisions tonight, but just have some good quality conversation, so we hope that we add value to that. My task is quite a challenge, particularly for Ms. Abs and Mr. Frame, who have not been as engaged with this process as intimately as Mr. Goodwin and Mr. White had been. So I've got two different audiences here. I've got two that have been at the number of the meetings, and then two that haven't, so I'll try to do justice to the different perspectives.
Thank God, we are quick learners.
Absolutely, absolutely. I stand in the presence of greatness.
Well, I don't know about all that, but I don't know about it for me, but yeah.
What I'm going to do is simply go through the PowerPoint presentation that represents the master plan for expansion and renovation, expansion and modernization of Orange County High School. Going to move kind of fast, so if you've got any questions, happy to answer them, but I'm going to then quickly try to get back on pace. If you look at, at the, as you can see, the school board had this presented to it on October thirtieth, work session two thousand thirteen by Ben Motley of RRMM Architects. I don't have a mouse with me. Is that okay?
Just nod at me.
Oh, not, okay.
I'll be with you.
Okay. The intent was to provide the school board and the board supervisors with a plan for renovations, additions, and site improvements for Orange County High School that would be characterized by a plan that would build consensus, create additional opportunities for students, and serve as a good starting point for further conversation. That'd be financially feasible, that it would provide for the twenty-first century skills that students would need, flexibility for the future, reflect community values, be functional but yet provide some degree of aesthetic appeal, be sustainable as much as could practically be provided, that it would increase competitiveness for our children, and address needs that would be defensible. In the process, it would seek to meet the following goals, and that is to identify and prioritize criteria for future improvements, uncover cost-effective strategies, and provide a phased plan for implementation. As was discussed by the two boards a few months ago, the desire was to limit phases to five million dollars, and to, and then the architects were then challenged in that process to make sure that if there was something that needed to be done, even if it was more important than something else, it might have to wait simply because that something else had to be done first. You'll see how that plays out in the phasing process. So sometimes a priority might have to be deferred because in order to prepare for that property, something else had to be done in advance. You'll see how that works. And then, once all that was done, then to back up and look at those most immediate priorities for short-term spending and see what, if anything, could be done in the limited economic context that we have. The parameters that were employed by the architects were to plan for a one-hundred percent capacity of two thousand students, compliance to Virginia Department of Education guidelines, in particular, the fact that new schools are no longer built with classrooms that are five hundred square feet. They're built at seven hundred square feet, and it's one of the reasons why we have cramming in a lot of our rooms, because we're still compliant with state pupil teacher ratios, but our rooms are not based on modern, the pupil teacher ratio is modern, but the size of the classroom is not. And so there, there was, you'll see built into this a desire to create classrooms that were seven hundred square feet. Include the Career and Technical Education Task Force recommendations out of the study that was released back in two thousand nine, ten. Improve student traffic flow. You all are very well aware of the crowding in the hallways and stairways. Improve student safety, specifically the number of times that mass numbers of students exit the building. They go outside to get to another building and then come back in. No schools anymore are doing that, and there's good, Newtown and Columbine are good reasons why we don't have that much freedom for people. why, uh, we don't have that much freedom for people to come and go through the day, controlling student exiting and, and, uh, and returning back to the building. And so the campus approach that we have currently was one that was looked at for change. Uh, the construction of an eight lane track, we're not even saying replacing our track because we can't even call ours a track anymore. Reconfiguration of athletic fields, particularly looking at, uh, a more efficient way to, uh, present athletic contests for large crowds. Uh, but in particular, uh, if we have to, if we put an addition on the building that takes up parking and parking has to move, then that means athletic fields have to move. And so, there, there's some emphasis on athletic fields up front, not because that's more important, it's 'cause we've gotta kinda get things out of the way so that we can start expanding the building. And with that, uh, there are a variety of, of structural needs at Porterfield Park, and this was the time to incorporate that into this review and see where that would fit into the great picture. The next slide, titled "The Simple Process," simply looks at the process that the architects employed. I'm gonna skip over that except simply to say that there was a, a very small steering committee, there was a larger, what we call, um, a larger administrative committee, if you will, of maybe a dozen people. And then there were two days of, of stakeholder workshops where there were multiple dozens of individuals, mainly teachers and students and parents and even some folks from the two boards and staff involved in those discussions. A big challenge for the architects is to get everybody to kinda step back and look at the big picture. You know, a lot of people that have their individual interests, uh, their piece of Orange County High School's a problem, they want that addressed. And, or their piece of Orange County High School, they don't want compromised. And so there were a lot of different perspectives, and this body is probably familiar with the people that'll stop you on the street and say, this thing about Orange County High School has to be fixed, but then they haven't heard the person that stopped you up the street and said their piece of Orange County High School needed to be fixed. So this was probably the first time in quite some time where we sat down and we looked at the total picture and brought all of these needs to the table at the same time.
All my constituents should tell me to move at the other end of the county.
Great segue, great segue. The next, the next slide says, "New High School Versus Renovation in Addition." Uh, to construct a new high school for two thousand students would be eighty-three million dollars, and that's very consistent with what we're hearing from new construction. Uh, now, if it was not two thousand students, would it be less money? Uh, to some extent, it would be because you would compromise the size, the number of classrooms that you would have at least initially, but your core facilities are all gonna be basically the same cost. And so it's not like you can take the number of two thousand that you see on that slide, cut it in half and then assume that the price tag would be half of that. You could probably get it down into the sixties, but you're not gonna get any smaller than that. So it's important to keep in mind when we think in terms of the timing and the expense of renovation and modernization of the current building. All right, we're gonna take a little bit of a deviation and look at Porterfield Park because one of the, one of the related questions, but not really central to the conversation is, is that, you know, what would we do with this in the long run? What, you know, it, it is, it is not very common that you see baseball and football, uh, perform in the same location, and there's reasons for that, we're not gonna take time with that tonight. So the question would be, if you're gonna do any changing, if you're gonna take a sport over to the home site, would it be baseball or football if and when you did that? And so we looked at, as you can see in the next slide, uh, what, could Porterfield serve as a football and track facility? Because there's value in having football and track in the same venue. And you can see where the architects took an overlay and they showed on these next two slides, uh, where if you, if you go horizontally or you go vertically, either way, you're not gonna get track and football into Porterfield Park. Could it be football only, which is the next slide? Yes, it could be football only. But what we found with this particular part of the study was that if you move baseball over to the home facility, baseball doesn't fit into the home facility as well as football does. So if you move one, it would be football. In the meantime, if you allowed Porterfield to become baseball only, it would be a really, really nice baseball facility. I mean, people around Virginia would talk about how beautiful that baseball facility would be, once you see the design for it. It'll be quite an attractive venue for the town of Orange and for the county. Um, we'll come back to that later. So now we go to OCHS Existing Conditions. We see the, uh, ten thousand foot view, if you will, of the property with the main building, we use the term "main building" on the left, bus garage, bottom right-hand corner, you see the Hornet Sports Center. The next one so calls, uh, is titled Significant Topographic Features. This shows you, um, some of the challenges that confronted the architects and the people involved in the, uh, the planning and in particular, some of the steep grades on the property that needed to be worked with, and you'll see how they've made creative use of, of design elements to address that. I'll move on, we'll come back to that. The next one is titled Initial Scheme to Start the Conversation. Uh, the only thing I'll point out here is, is that this was a, sort of a rough draft that the architects put out only for the sake of conversation. You can see where there were challenges with moving baseball to the, uh, to the, uh, property. But, um, from this emerged these orange, i- if I could show, kinda get your attention just on the orange spheres here, these, these emerge as the areas that would most likely accommodate building additions. And, um, uh, the blue area, uh, the blue sphere points out area where we have power plant areas that, where they'd actually need to keep additions away from that without incurring substantial, uh, cost. The next one is titled Master Site Plan Fully Developed. Um, this is a good place for you later when you're just looking for one sheet that kinda has it all and you can visualize what it, what it looks like and some narrative associated with it. Not much use to us tonight because it's so small for, for the public to view, but I'm gonna skip over that because it's all broken out in subsequent slides, phase by phase. But all of the phases are on that slide for you to kinda consume at one time. Similarly, uh, the next three slides show what the master plan looks like on the interior building, floor plans, again, very small for the audience to see. You can refer to this later, but it is broken out in, in phases, and even on this one, you can see some enumeration of the phases for, uh, what amounts to be the first floor, which is where you enter in the lobby outside the office. The next slide is the ground floor, which is where the cafeteria is, and the third slide is the upstairs, which is, uh, all classrooms. Each one of these, like I said, will be covered in the phasing that comes in the subsequent slides. As, uh, most architects, the industry standard, when trying to estimate costs is an assumption of eighty-five percent hard costs directly related to construction and fifteen percent related to soft costs, which would be your furniture fixture and equipment, architectural engineering fees and all the other, uh, costs. They have built those into their estimates that they provided to you in this presentation. Okay. Now we begin to look at the phase slides, Site Master Plan Phase One. Um, as you go through these, you'll note that, uh, the, the pattern they follow is to show you the site and the impact of the phase on the, on the aerial view of the site. With it, in one of the corners of the slide, you're going to see the description of the work itemized by project, and you'll see the subtotal cost of each phase and then a running total to the right of that in each one. And as you go through each slide, the running total, of course, will increase as, as the various phases increase. Phase one, uh, addresses the immediate need for a track at the high school and, and excavation work that's gonna become necessary when parking is moved away from the building and towards the track itself. Underground utilities installed that will later on allow a stadium to be constructed without tearing up the track in the future, and the tennis courts, which are in deteriorating condition, would be rebuilt at the base of the hill with engineering work done to make the, uh, wetlands area suitable for construction and be sure that all the various environmental concerns with the wetlands would be met. The next, next-
Why don't you ask, why don't you ask if they have any questions?
If we stop for questions, this'll take an hour.
Okay.
So unless anybody really wants my attention and you wave vigorously, I'm gonna keep moving. Uh, Ms. Carter, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
And then, and then obviously, we'll come back to anything anyone wants. Phase two involves the, uh, first actual facility construction on the front of the building in the green area to the left as you look at the front office, uh, from Selma Avenue. This would be a two-story addition that would house Hornet Tech, would move Hornet Tech out of that building up on the hill and would allow us to empty selected classrooms in the modular units and move business IT classes and nursing into this new two-story addition in front of the building. To accommodate that, we have to move family and consumer sciences, which would be work that would be done in advance of the construction. We have to, uh, that room runs perpendicular to the corridor that's gonna run into the new addition. So family and consumer sciences would, you'll see in the ma, in the, uh, floor plan how that would be resolved, uh, uh, to make sure that that program could continue.
That's two stories on that addition?
Yeah, we'll get to the floor plan in just a second, Lee. Um, the, uh, teacher parking in front of the building would be, uh, engineered to allow traffic, pickup traffic in the afternoon to come off Selma Avenue and to line up within, within the, uh, property of the, uh, of the high school. And we would eliminate the modular units in front of the building. Now we look at the floor plan. If you look at the first floor, you'll see FACS, the green area, uh, top middle, that's where we would move family and consumer sciences in the months advanced, uh, ahead of, uh, of, uh, the construction of the facility in front of the, uh, building. HT means Hornet Tech. You see three Hornet Tech classrooms that accommodates future expansion of that program in accordance with the CTE study that was done a couple of years ago, aligning our instructional CTE programs with future workforce development and some business IT classrooms that would begin the process of allowing us to close out the modular units. The next page shows you the second floor with a, a nursing lab, uh, construction. We currently are teaching nursing in a double classroom. It's not really designed to instruct in nursing, and we also are allowing an additional nursing classroom because that's another growth area that we see as the school gets bigger and we want to expand our CTE programs. You can see we've got additional nursing space there. We've added marketing, uh, that was called for in the CTE feasibility study. That's a programmatic addition that's occurred irrespective of the building, and you can see a classroom for marketing and additional business IT classes. This will enable us to get rid of the modular units and it'll begin freeing up some classroom space inside the main building. Phase three, so, uh, select site improvements plus, uh, building trades and locker room additions. This is an example of, 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 uh, construction that will occur, that wouldn't normally be a top priority, but it has to occur in order for another priority to take place in another, uh, phase. Uh, we have this athletic locker room that's located in like the middle of the downstairs of the building, a really odd vestige of the past, it really's got no business being next to the cafeteria, but that's where it is. We would empty that locker room, we would move that out and construct this athletic team locker room on the back of the Hornet Sports Center in anticipation of that existing locker room space becoming Culinary Arts right next door to the cafeteria. The building trades program would now extend into the parking lot and force the need for this parking area that would be built in this green space that would be excavated for, uh, that had been previously excavated in phase one. There would be traffic flow now that would go to Wa Boulevard and that would require, uh, engineering along Route twenty with turn lanes and expansion, that's built into this. Uh, and finally, there would be conversion, and this, this'll probably occur before phase three because we've got an alternative way of getting to this, that we have these underutilized handball and racquetball courts and a very undersized weight room. Modern high schools have much more capacity for, uh, aerobic and, um, uh, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, there's free weights and there's resistance weights, um, you know, nautilus or life fitness equipment. What, the intent there is to combine the racquetball, handball courts with the weight room into a large fitness area, and we're thinking there's probably gonna be some local interest in, in, in helping to support the cost of that. Um, and, uh, we're gonna be moving in that direction, but that, that's for, as a placeholder, that's built into phase three. If you flip the page, you can see the floor plan on the ground floor for the building trades program with a lobby that then connects the, the, uh, wing of the building where JROTC is with that back hall on the bottom floor. And again, there's a traffic flow issue and a security issue. That's one more way that students are no longer exiting and coming back into the building, and it adds a building trades program. One of, that's, that's one of those, those CTE programs that we absolutely know we need to have. We should've had it a long time ago, and it's one that we, we really are anxious to get incorporated into our high school program. Looking at phase four, on the next slide, this is where Culinary Arts moves from the Taylor Center back to the home high school. Another, another, uh, reduction in the, the need for students to be leaving the building, they stay in that, that same building, and the Culinary Arts Program, by being located right next to the cafeteria, enjoys a lot of benefits in having that cafeteria space for, um, uh, student training. We also, uh, in this phase, are going to see the construction of an auxiliary gym on the backside of the Hornet Sports Center. That's because we are going to turn the old gym into a media center and use the current media center as a expanded, uh, dining area. Great use of space. The only thing it requires, though, is this, we do need that auxiliary gym to make up for those programs that are occurring in the old gym. Um, lot of excitement, if you go ahead and turn the page and look at the floor plan, you can see where Culinary Arts goes in to the locker room areas and that general vicinity right next to the cafeteria on the ground floor. But if you turn the page, you'll see that when we move the media center from the downstairs media area, turn that into a dining to the old gym, you can see that the architects have built a corridor straight out of the lobby back to the, um, sort of that, near that back wall back there and created a bridge to that corridor and that back science wing. And every student and teacher that looks at that just kinda gasps and says, oh, finally, wonderful. That's one of those traffic flow additions that is going to have a substantial impact on, on that whole crowded feel of student movement in that building, just a substantial, substantial benefit there. Notice that there's a large group instruction room off of the media center, and if you flip the page, because of that high ceiling in the old gym, there'll be this mezzanine area on top of that room where presumably there would be book stacks and that would create more room for more technology-based research and, uh, more modernized media center activities on the, what is now the gym floor. Phase five, this is where the community could then make a decision about, you know, what would be the status of the agriculture facility at that point? Obviously, we, we need to have parking, but at that point, would we also need modernization of our agriculture facilities? You know, what would be the temperament of the community at that point about moving that facility? By doing it, we, we accomplish one more step of getting one more, uh, reason for students to exit the building and go to another building. It improves on safety and security, it modernizes. At that point, we're anticipating that we would need a modernization of our agriculture ed facility, and we simply need the parking there, uh, because we're taking up more space. Uh, we will have already started to take up more space in the back parking lot. Floor plan for the ag lab is on the next page. If I go to phase six, uh, this is where we, uh, complete the stadium construction around the, uh, track. Um, at this point, we're anticipating that the cost of artificial turf may be achievable. Uh, as you know, that field up there is used not just by our athletic teams, it's used by everybody, and for that reason, it hardly ever has grass on it. So it could be at that point that so many schools, because we're seeing it now, so, you know, you're seeing more and more schools getting artificial turf, and it's more resilient and it's more, and it's more safe than it was in the past, that by the time we would get to this project, it's reasonable to include it as a consideration, not necessarily something you have to do. Um, we would complete the stadium work with, uh, putting bathrooms and concessions in for football, a de, additional, um, bleachers and lighting. And then if you flip the page, the second part of phase six is back over at Porterfield Park. Um, some of what you see here is gonna have to be done before phase six because of the retaining wall deterioration that we're seeing at Porterfield and the desperate need for more hygienic and, and safe bathrooms and, and concessions. Be that as it may, for placeholder purposes, it's in phase six, and you can see what the finished product would look like in this first drawing, but in the meantime, there's still gonna be a, you know, an extended period of time for the foreseeable future where both baseball and football will be played at Porterfield, and that's on this next page, which we call Porterfield Park Interim Improvements. What, what's missing here is a shifting of the baseball field that would enable it to be baseball only and the construction of, of bleachers on the hill, but in the meantime, it shows the most critical priorities for Porterfield Park, namely, the elimination of these retaining walls and replacing them with sloped surfaces that are grassed, that are much more safe and aren't deteriorating, and the relocation of concessions and bathrooms on the hill in such a way that they'll still make sense while it's still football and baseball, but someday, should football leave, they'll still make sense as baseball only. And so we were really grateful to the architects and those that contributed to coming up with this particular solution because it really wasn't within our scope of imagination previously. Uh, phase seven then gets us into this process of finishing the work of expanding our CTE offerings with, uh, new drafting and technology labs in a two-story structure that would come out from the home building and, and finish the cutoff of what was once Hornet Drive. In a two-story structure that would come out from the home building and, and finish the cutoff of what was once Hornet Drive where we had a mix of vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Sort of enclose this pedestrian mall area here. And, and, and if at the time it's desired by the two boards at that time, you could even enclose, come up with an enclosed walkway that would connect it to the Hornet Sports Center if you so desire. But that's not built into this design. We continue with right sizing of classrooms from five hundred to seven hundred square feet. Meaning that we would need for every four classrooms, we will now have three classrooms and that one classroom's got to go someplace. And we presume also that at this point we'll start seeing enrollment increases that far out where we're just simply going to need more rooms. To keep within the five hundred million dollar limit for each phase, we limited this, uh, addition to four point seven million. And you can see the, uh, floor plans.
Is that a little bit of?
Five hundred million?
Five hundred million is what you said.
Well, we've, we've discovered imagination recently. And I just made a Freudian slip. That Mrs. Abs will remind me about probably here somewhere.
No, no, Ms. Linters was actually the one who caught it, so.
I caught it, but I can't say anything.
The risk of talking fast is that I, I sort of confirm my image as snake oil salesman. What did you say there, Mrs. Abs?
No, dear, you were fine. I'm loving it. You're doing a good job.
I'm just trying to respect everybody's time and I'm already running behind. That the ground floor of this two-story addition would have drafting and technical, uh, education. But the top floor of it would be these classrooms that would make up for the right sizing, which is on the second page of that depiction on the floor plan. And then phase eight would be the second, um, uh, this would be an additional five million dollar addition, another two-story, uh, addition. That would accommodate the final resizing of classrooms inside the main building. It would add to standard classrooms on the bottom floor and on the top floor and bring the school to the full two thousand, uh, student capacity. But align it with modern standards for the size of the rooms. The final phase is phase nine. Far enough into the future that we would anticipate that there would be enough, uh, transportation operational cost at the east end of the county. That there would be justification for moving the bus garage farther east. Uh, probably be modernization of the bus garage needed, perhaps consolidation with consult, with, uh, with the county vehicular servicing. Uh, the maintenance facility, uh, the maintenance staff needs some answers before we get this far along. We need to do something about that old barn where they, where they have their maintenance shop. Uh, but for the sake of a placeholder, this would be the point at which the bus garage and the maintenance facility would leave. And we would pull field hockey and soccer off the Prospect Heights property. And allow the current venue for field hockey and soccer to be designated for Prospect Heights only. Uh, and bring its athletic facilities capability up in line with the new Locust Grove Middle School currently. There's, uh, if you look at after-school access, Prospect Heights is a little bit behind Locust Grove Middle School. And, and aesthetically, it would create a beautiful entry into the town of Orange. It'd be a green space that would be nice. It would be available for some degree of recreational use and, uh, would replace the current bus garages your, your hello as you enter the town of Orange. The final slide shows the criteria that the architects had sought to meet. And, and by most of the feedback that we've received to date, um, they did a very good job of doing that. I'm going to very quickly defer to Matt, who's going to try to tie this into the discussion about the current status of the school board CIP. And, um, hopefully believe you all with some kind of talk. I did think I was going to do better than that.
Let's, let's stop, let's stop for a minute before Matt. I know that we're at time, but now that you've looked at that, if you have any questions about this particularly before we go to Matt, might be a good time to ask.
You talked about lighting at the football stadium in one of your later phases. Did you have something, uh, earlier than that, uh, for, for lighting or is it at that point you just have the?
Just, uh, that, that one pha- phase, uh, six, was it, uh, Lee? You've got, um, where, um, the stadium is constructed around the track. That's where the lights would be.
I actually have a question about the phasing. Did, I, I know there was at least some preliminary discussion with the architects as to the price tag of, associated with phasing. Phasing is not free. And, uh, at this point, do we have any sense as to the, the premium that the phasing is, is costing us?
That wasn't part of their charge, but it would be easy enough to do. You would just have to agree on a, uh, a, uh, inflation index that you apply. And, uh, there would be some, there's always additional costs when we break it up. Our assumption is it'd be more expensive to phase it. But we were limited to what our charges were.
Right, 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 okay.
We all know that this is a cost as of today. It certainly isn't a cost, it's just like building a new high school at the other end for eighty-five million.
You would videotape this presentation or when, when the architects were doing it or when you were getting present, making decisions on it, should you videotape? I mean, this is a complex, uh, phasing. And something for the citizens of the county to see what you're doing. It's pretty hard to explain even with just showing these slides. But, uh, uh, your forty-minute, uh, or thirty-minute, uh, presentation. Would you think that, uh, at some point, uh, because there'll be a lot of questions about this. And, uh, at some point, explaining this to the, for something for the citizens as a whole would be useful.
Well, I think capturing your, your knowledge of it and your, your having been immersed in it now for several months, passing that along to the citizens, I think it would be important.
Yeah, I mean, if you just, uh, if you just said, okay, I'm, I'm going through these, but, you know, uh, doing it on a, uh, uh, and, and recording it. And, uh, making it available to the citizens, uh, uh, so that they know, this is a big project and it's a long-term project. Uh, just people understand, building, building community acceptance is a, is an element that might be helpful.
Okay, okay, Matt.
Can we go to the other tab? And let's start with the CIP and master plan options over here. There's just one missing, but I'll just speak to it. What the administration was charged with, and we provided the, the school board with an updated, um, CIP, CIP, which they certainly haven't endorsed and are going to consider over the coming weeks. But just to, what can we bite off or possibly bite off and what would it cost to do without considering any debt options? Looking at phase one and one part of phase six involving Porterfield. Phase one obviously involves, uh, the grading and the track, um, the tennis courts and kind of roughing in the underground lighting. And fencing for a future possibility of the, the football stadium going there. So we looked at this as a cash option, what impact that would play on the, the current CIP, which the school board has put up for public comment and, and to consider. And what impact would that have, um, on both boards going forward? Just looking at those, those phases there. And so this illustration here, a little chart, um, would show the current CIP at a hundred and fifty thousand built into it as a supplemental request. Additional request from the county, uh, to build in and match a school board, uh, kind of carving out of their current CIP over the next five years. Uh, and if we, if we did that at a hundred and fifty thousand a year, um, what it, what it looked like to do phase one was essentially, you can start on the design work by two thousand sixteen, seventeen. Um, and then two thousand eighteen, you can really get into the grading and some of the design work for, for the Porterfield areas. And then by two thousand nineteen, you would have accumulated enough money to start the construction of, of new restrooms and concessions at Porterfield. And then by two thousand twenty into two thousand twenty-one, fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, you start looking at completing phase one and that part of phase six for, for prepping for the football stadium. If that amount is increased to a three hundred thousand dollar annual, uh, county contribution increase in it. You'd look at, at completing those by two thousand and nineteen. And, and a note there on the asterisk, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, increment of a supplemental appropriation to the current budget. Uh, you'd have to defer several projects within the existing CIP, uh, including the radiator removal and asbestos removal at Unionville. Some painting and, and ceiling grid projects and some athletic equipment at the fieldhouse, which was currently in there.
These are things that are already in your CIP?
Yeah, they're built in there.
They're built in at the, at the?
At the tail end right now. And so those would have to be pushed off into unfunded into FYI two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. So that would be have to, those would have to be deferred. If it's at three hundred thousand dollar, um, annual contribution, then only the radiator removal at, at Unionville would have to be deferred. And then you can see at, from a cash-only option at four hundred thousand dollars additional funding to what the current CIP was for, for the school board. The most aggressive option there. You can see the design work could start as early as next year. And then by two thousand fifteen, sixteen, you can do the site grading for the track and, um, and, and build the track and the fencing and tennis courts all by.
This is a part of, uh, of moving along this system and, and some of the things you were saying, we had to defer things.
This is looking at it without considering any kind of bonds. What, what would the cash requirements be to tackle, um, with as, as few deferments of current projects as possible? What were the cash requirements, um, to start doing phase one and part of phase six for prepping for a football movement?
I will tell you when the board discussed this.
I mean, phase six then is something that is, you call it a phase, but it doesn't have to, you don't have to do phase one through five to do phase six. Phase six is almost an independent standalone.
Yeah, that, that's why the two boards have to have some conversation about the relationship between the master plan and the CIP. Because the CIP has, has well-defined priorities built into it that, that transcend the master plan. The, the track is a safety issue. It's, it's frankly a community embarrassment issue. We're like the only, one of the few schools in the state that can't host a track meet for its own team. So we, we, we can't, our students can't run on it. In fact, we're going to replace it with a cinder track. We've talked about these things.
Sure, I understand.
And then, then the retaining walls at Porterfield, you know, had insult to injury. Also, they start, you know.
I, I'm just, you know, because we talked phase one and two, but phase six, the, the Porterfield is, could be.
There are elements of phase six that, that are on us, that, that are imposing themselves on us that, that we were asked to kind of report back on how we work that.
We have some walls that are collapsing over there now.
I understand, I know what the problems are, but what I'm saying is that that is not, I don't have to complete phase one through five to do phase six.
These are just options. They're just options. You can move it around any way that we want to.
Phase six, yeah, okay.
Ma, help me for a second with the simple math on, on, on this chart that you're talking about.
And we can get to the detail if you want to.
Well, it, it's, the, the money la- uh, column is entitled additional annual contribution. Is it, i- i- am I reading this correctly? It's a hundred and fifty thousand for six years versus three hundred for five or four hundred for four?
Yeah.
Because I get different totals when I do that.
It's assuming that, yeah.
But that's a match. That's us coming up with a hundred and fifty and you matching the hundred and fifty.
At that point, when you get to the three hundred and four hundred, the only things being deferred then are the, are the ones that are already outlined there.
Actually, I, if I remember correctly, the hundred and fifty column should really have a couple more blocks out there because things happen in two thousand.
Right, and there's a parentheses where it's going to go out to two thousand twenty-one.
But we all know some of those things can't wait, as, as Lee was saying.
So the first one is more than six years.
When the board, when this board discussed this, they really were not interested in the hundred and fifty and the three hundred. Just takes things out too long. But we wanted to make the options to you of trying to do what Dr. Bob had talked about, a savings account like we do with our, um, purchase of books. You know, we carry that over every year so we don't have to spend so much at one time.
Okay, so if I, if we go with the four hundred. That is, uh, I mean, at some point, we, at some point you need to, you need to come up with big bucks. For, uh, for construction. But you're doing some construction here.
And, and phase one was one point three million in today's dollars. Um, and the part of phase six, we're looking at total seven hundred and thirty thousand. So of all of the master plan, probably took a little over two million of what, what was outlined.
Would, would this, would this finish?
Took four years of that.
Would this do phase one, this four hundred?
Yes.
It does phase one?
Right.
Through two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
You know, not immediately.
We would think by, by the end of two thousand sixteen that it would do, complete phase one. And then the remaining, the remaining part would be the phase six, part of phase six.
And then, then we're getting into phase two is the big bucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
None of the other phases can be parceled. There's, there's the, um, the consolidation of the racquetball and handball courts with the weight. That's only, you know, a hundred and some odd thousand dollars. And you can almost even look at some fundraising involved with that one. But, but these are the only ones that we could pull out and say that you're, we, we can even, it's not a conception.
It also does get you started on your plan.
And some of these items were in, have been in your CIP. You, you deferred them. That part of the carryover that we did a few weeks ago included some funds for, for some of these that we deferred.
And a lot of that was to, to more, more or less address some of the retaining wall issues or, or maintaining the track with a cinder, um, not necessarily digging into phase one.
Right.
Those are temporary measures for transition bias in time.
Right, okay.
We're going into the next one now.
Yeah, the other, the other tab we really point out.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Where are we headed next?
I'll just touch on capital improvement plan A, which is based on the four hundred thousand. It will be the same. This is kind of the outline and more detailed approach of, uh, with that supplemental funding on top of what's currently there. Kind of how the deferment works and how it, how it turns down. This is obviously plan A at the four hundred thousand, which is the quickest one, because we're putting the most into it. There are, the two others there, three hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. Just a little more background on it, uh, over the five years. And how that would look in the existing CIP.
And that is of course above the current funding.
Right.
Yes.
Correct. I don't know if you can go back.
Go backwards.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. The others are just the, the other outline and there's the draft five-year capital improvement plan. As it stands now, yeah, that last one. And this is what, this, this school board has, uh, currently in play without these, any of these incorporated into it yet.
Were we going on to this or not?
Uh, we, we chose on how to use it.
Okay.
And now, do you want to defer and any questions that you'd as well ask the administrators?
Is it your intent to take the various phases of the master plan and begin incorporating more than just the phase one, phase six that you described for us? Here into a new CIP? Is that, is that something that's underway, going to be done, being talked about?
We were kind of deferring until the boards had the discussion. We did one thing out there, we were looking at cash only, what would it take to do some of phase one? But really, the school board just saw that last week and so they're still vetting that and kind of wondering.
We really haven't made any decisions on anything. We've looked at it. We wanted to come back with some discussion from you.
As you assess the need, um, going forward, nee- with respect to these, these nine phases. I- is it your feel at this point that they can be spread over some period of time? Or is the need, uh, and maybe this is a question for our, our esteemed principal of the high school. Are there needs that you see coming that will cause some of these to have to be brought into the same year? And you're, you're working on, I don't know, phases three, parts of phases three and four simultaneously. I mean, I, I, as I recall from some of the earlier discussions, it didn't sound to me like that we really could spread this out over fifteen, twenty, thirty, or forty years, which was one part of the discussion. And so that, that means that there are needs that are arising that need to be, uh, addressed simultaneously, I suppose. I'm not trying to give you the answer, but did I, in my? I'm not trying to give you the answer, but did I, am I hearing that and is that a reasonable? Thing to be considered, a- as we look at the CIP process, really, is what triggered it.
It, I would say that that you're absolutely right, Mr. White, there are some things there that that I look at. Both from a utility standpoint, in terms of what we provide for students, and and especially from a safety standpoint. That I look at and say, we really need to try and combine some of these phases together to make this work better for everybody. To provide more for students, provide a better opportunity for them, and to to make sure that we're doing all that we can to keep them as safe as possible. When we look at at the amount of time that we have students back and forth between buildings across the campus, there was a point in time before Columbine where. That was not a big deal at all, we didn't worry about things like that. I worry every day about where our kids are having to go, just to be able to go from one class to another. We have students walking from the high school up the back way, past the fieldhouse, to the old school board offices to be able to get to their technology classes and back. And that's, that's all open area. That's where where I have to be concerned, and I've got people out watching, we're doing everything that we can. But trying to minimize those kinds of risks in in the world that that we keep moving further into is a serious concern for me. Expanding the programs and offerings that we have for our students and trying to meet meet at the same time the kinds of needs that we have in the community that have been identified. In terms of of the career and technical aspects, where our labor force is gonna be going. That's an expansion that's going to serve all of us well in the future. I think there are any number of things in here that we need to look at combining if we can. I also understand the constraints and 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 what was prescribed for us as we began the process. And working within that, we came up with the best plan that I think we could possibly have come up with.
I think if you don't think about combining some of these, none of us are will be around when this gets done.
Well, I guess the basic point is it's not necessarily sequential.
You might be, because you're the, she's the youngest.
At at five, five-year, five-million chunks.
At forty-five years.
No, I I I don't know, it'd be interesting, but I don't foresee it.
I don't think you'll be, I don't think we'll be sitting here.
Well, and I guess my point was that that we we should not, in in trying to build a new CIP that includes some of this, we should not think sequentially exclusively at least, is what I'm hearing you say.
What we did is what we heard you say, you know, is to look at at what we needed in phases and the and the amount of money. And I think what what you asked for, I think is what we gave you, I think these architects have done a great job, but what we need to do now is to look at, what can we do? To combine some of these phases and fulfill the things that Mr. Duncan was just talking about, with safety being first. Any more questions?
You've seen the end of the rainbow anytime.
No.
We can, we can cheer like to find that place. Hot of gold wouldn't be enough.
No.
Maybe a truckload, maybe. Truckload or a railcar.
We do end up, after you look at it and you have more discussions, you know, the people at the school board office that you can call, or any of the board members. I do want to take the time to thank you for meeting with us, um, you know, I think Dr. Bob did a good job of trying to get it within his hour period of time. Um, but as you look through it, you might come up with some more questions, but thank you. Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make?
I, I was involved in a couple meetings and with the architects here, and I I I was really impressed with the job they did. I think they laid out a reasonable plan for us now, we just have to, at least we know what needs to be done, or at least what the school board feels needs to be done. And now we just need to figure out. How to do it, when to do it, and so at least we're discussing, we're not deciding, I don't know how to try to say it. We know what we want to do, we just have now to figure out how we can do it.
Yeah, I think most of the comments that we had at our public hearing, and the comments that I hear from the community, is they're glad that we have a plan. That there's never really been a plan before like this, and I think that's a a huge compliment. Uh, particularly to Dr. Bob, who came up with the idea of doing a plan. How much of it we get to do, I don't know, but at least it's a plan.
Well, I was impressed with the architects, because it was, when Jim and I were there, it was like, take these ten million moving targets. And give it to us on a page, and they came back, and it was like, there it is, it's like, yeah, that's what we said.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I will tell you what I like about this, more so than the other alternative with the plan with the CTE. I think this is per, one, as you say, the safety issue that is a huge concern, but it's also functional, and it makes sense. And you're actually getting way more for your money than you were for just a seventeen-million-dollar CTE building that all it was gonna be was just a CTE building. So for not even, you know, for basically double the price, you're getting.
A new school.
Four times the, you know, you, it it's just, it's it's just, this, this makes way more sense and is definitely something that I feel way more comfortable supporting. Just because it just, this just makes sense, not that the CTE didn't, because it does, but the 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 concept of CTE makes sense. The design didn't make sense, because it didn't meet the needs that.
You still were, you were still were stuck with an an old high school.
Well, yeah, and you still have, you know, you have kids that, I don't, I'm not as concerned about kids walking back and forth, because it's never hurt anybody to walk. But when you have sixteen-year-olds monitoring the doors, you know, they're the ones who are letting in someone, and how do you know? Do you know every person and fifteen hundred people? No. Is that a teacher, or is it a, is it somebody coming in, you know, you're having kids monitor the doors.
I've never seen any kids monitoring the doors, when I've been there, it's always them.
No, what I mean, the the kids are the ones letting them in, and I have been let in at school by a kid from the back parking lot, they didn't know who I was when I came in the door. So they are the ones, you know, they don't know if it's another student, or if it's someone that's not supposed to be there doing something, so. You know, you you can't secure, you cannot secure that.
Well, I think what you're saying proves the point that it can't be secured, but with this it can be.
Yes.
I recently went to Flavanna High School for the last football game, and I was just amazed at how much fencing was there. How much fencing was around the new.
You sure you weren't at Flavanna Correctional Center?
No. It's probably about the same amount of fencing. But they had, you know, between the high school and the football field and all the things that they had, it was fencing everywhere, and it was sad, but it was a necessity.
Uh, there's another issue too, uh, since safety's important, and I'm not downplaying that, but if you have a school, especially a school that's in a town. And people's homes are just a block away, how do you know whether the kid's going to the gym or whether he's going home?
Yeah.
It it, uh, it's better if you could just have them all contained in a building, and then if you see somebody walking outside, somebody starts, well, why is this person out there? And then you start to ask the question, I'm not here in a school day, so I can't really say, but I, from the way I see it in my mind. It's, it's a terrible job for the administration to try to track down every kid that they see walking outside the building and say, are you on task, or are you skipping school?
I would like to ask you, any of you all, to, uh, we would love for you to come to the high school after you look at this, and you can actually see. What Dr. Bob was talking about, like the old gym, and where you would now want to put the culinary arts. You know, you can see it on paper, but I think once you go and see it visually, it helps you, so we would be more than happy for any of you all individually or as a group to come. And actually look at it and then look at this paper, and I think it helps you to see a whole lot more of what they're trying to do.
Um, I think from a community relations perspective, I think Mr. Frame's idea of packaging this into a video. From a communication standpoint, we may want to, doing that, if it's possible, to simplify it a little bit more, because it's a, it's a pretty complex process. But I think, uh, I think it's an excellent idea if we're gonna.
We're gonna have it on the school's website.
Yep.
We could put it up on ours.
Yeah, ours.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, I I appreciate, you know, Tilla and Mr. White meeting all the times that you guys did and whatever. Um, I realize that we are only a small pie of that pizza that you guys have to deal with, but I certainly thank you, but also I.
No, actually, you're a whole lot of the pie.
And you wanted them, we're gonna say that.
Right, exactly, but I, you know, I think it it's all of our duties and responsibility to go out here and educate the public and, you know, the people in our districts. As to what the plan and what the goal is, and to answer any questions that's out there that they, you know, may not understand. Um, doing the, the, sort of like the website, I think is an excellent idea. Um, you know, maybe that'll, that'll help too, but again, like I said, I I appreciate the conversations and.
Well, if you make such a presentation.
This is our kids we're talking about, our future of Orange County, you know.
You have that such a good impression, I'll put it on our channel eighteen.
This is the big future of Orange County, not just financially.
It's, it, we are talking about our future, our kids.
Dr. Bob, do you have anything else that you'd like to finish with?
I'm trying to think of which, um, high-priced model we can hire to do this presentation.
I think you did a, I think you did a phenomenal job.
I I will need to slow it down.
Wear it, is that a, is that a snowman tie? I suggest you wear that again, that's very festive.
Thank you, Mrs. Ab.
I will raise one, one more question if I might, one of the things that that is not explicitly covered here that was part of the. Old CTE discussion going back several years was the adult. Education or re-education in terms of skill, and and I know that the one shortcoming of this master plan is it would be. Maybe not impossible, but very, very difficult to accommodate that slice of our need. And I I raise it just as something that probably should be part of the discussion going forward to to see what, if anything, could be done to address that.
I wouldn't use the word, I wouldn't use the word impossible, I I thought about that, uh, it obviously compromises that, uh, the the standalone facility up near Route twenty with its own parking and whatnot. You you couldn't beat that for adult, uh, an evening adult education.
Well, part of, that's what drove that design in large part.
And it drove some of the cost.
It drove a lot of the cost, yeah.
Uh, but it, but but I think that in this particular case, the fact that you've got nursing, um, tech, the Hornet Tech and business IT classes all clustered. In that that one appendage that comes out in the front, the fact that you've got building trades, uh, and potentially agriculture in the back. There there would be a lot of room for discussion about evening adult ed programs. You you'd have a few other considerations, but we wouldn't be the first, ours wouldn't be the first high school that didn't overcome those concerns. It would just take some behavioral management, maybe a nighttime administrator, uh, part-time administrator at night. We've got a number of teachers who are in our leadership cadet program, who who whoever, if Germana, for example, were running classes, it would be. An expense for the night program, but that person would become responsible for ensuring, you know, the the safety and security piece. I mean, there's ways you can get at that, th- this doesn't negate that, just makes it a little bit more of a challenge, but doesn't make it impossible.
So it was allowing, uh, other groups to use your gymnasiums.
Uh, yeah, 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 we currently do, in fact, a group can rent, you know, a church can rent, uh, our, an auditorium or a gym on a weekend. And some classrooms for Sunday school if they want, so there's precedent. According to our policy, as it stands.
That's a conversation for y'all to have at another time.
Without us.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me slip that in.
Is, is, any board members have anything else they would like to say? If not, I will adjourn now, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will go into closed.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting in the following matters. One matter concerning discussion of specific personnel and specifically an employee, discussion concerning prospective businesses or industry, or the expansion of existing business or industry. Where no previous announcement has been made of the business or interest's interest in locating or expanding its facilities into the community. And consultation with legal counsel employed retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven, eleven, eight, one, eight, five, and eight, seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion of the fore-said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed.
To the best of your knowledge, where only the matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mrs. Ab?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson's absent, Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Four zero.
Okay, with that, we come back into open session, uh, seven P M, we are lined up for public comment period on the Route Three Strategic Visioning Initiative. Has anyone signed up to comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there is one speaker currently signed up, Bruce K., resident of Lake of the Woods.
Well, that will open the public comment period.
Good evening.
Due to the amount of people we have here tonight, we ask you to restrict yourself to three minutes or less.
I forgot, I, I was just gonna tell you, you like to, I forgot my notes at home, so I'm gonna have to wing it. Anyway, the rea- the reason I'm here is, I I'm I'm really concerned about a lot of things I've heard and, uh, read about. People wanting to have a lot of open space on the Route Three corridor that you're looking at for the, uh, development area out there. Uh, the Lake of the Woods inundation study is online for that area on our website. It's part of the emergency, uh, action for our dam, which you have a copy of, and it's including the Orange County Emergency Action Plan. Uh, the top- topographical is available from the state, and, uh, I believe that's also available online. If you look at those two documents, um. Some of them show significant areas that will not be buildable, or shouldn't be buildable. An example, and I think you all remember, Tricor, uh, gave up some of their development rights in the inundation zone and and moved it back over. I don't know if you've changed the county plan to reflect that yet or not, I don't think I've seen it, you know, the area I'm talking about, Lee. Uh, so i- if you look at the inundation area, the topographical situation that we're looking at there. Uh, I'm just gonna use a figure of, let's say, twenty-five-hundred acres there that, of area, okay, of that, you know. Uh, if you take out some of this inundation and and buildable areas, I'm I'm not positive the amount of the acreage, but it could be. Up to five to six hundred acres that shouldn't be built on. Then you look at, we're looking at a potential reservoir for our water supply of anywhere from four hundred to seven hundred acres. Uh, one of Lee Frame's favorite areas discussed in that area is a frontage road, to keep traffic and and the people off of Route Three and and back in there. You know, I, and again, it all depends on how it's gonna develop, you can look at anywhere from fifty to a hundred and fifty acres worth of. Land use just for roads, for access roads going back into that area. Uh, another thing to consider when you're looking at and considering parks and recreation, the reservoir should be considered an area like Mott's Run is right now. Where they do allow fishing either on a manually operated boat or electrically operated boat for recreation. So that should be part of the recreational plan. One of the other areas that, uh, is gonna impact us as far as accessibility and things of that are concerned. Uh, almost all of the Rapidan frontage is controlled by the city of Fredericksburg as far as access and and things is, yeah, it is. Uh, there's a wide swath, I'm not exactly how how much of the easement or ownership that they own, but they do have a control. Of a portion of the, uh, river frontage all the way around there, so that that's another thing.
Mostly on the Coffe Pepper side?
No, sir, it's on the Orange County side.
Yeah, I I've seen a map.
You can, you can go to our own G S I and take a look, and you can see, and I, and I, uh, and it's really amazing the amount of area it does take up, because it's not only. You know, let's say, a hundred feet from the river's edge in, there's portions where it comes into the creeks that feed into it, so, you know, that that's a huge area. So when you take all this into consideration, you know, of the, I'll use the imaginative figure of twenty-five eight, hundred acres. Uh, you're down to probably less than, you know, eight. uh, you're down to probably less than, you know, eight, seven hundred, eight hundred acres of developmental property there. And with that, I think that, you know, I, I think the board should be really considering town centers thing, and I'll use Ruston Town Center as a, an example, but not for height ordinance, but I think you're gonna have to look at our height restrictions on development out there and look at developers being, have the ability to go five or six stories so that we could have some type of, uh, town center with possibly, uh, businesses below apartments and things like that, like they do in, uh, in Ruston and, and Vrfex, uh, County Town Center. But, uh, the main thing I'm looking at here is, you know, there's not really that much developable land out there when you take into consideration the, the topographical, the inundation zone, and our requirements for, you know, roads and the reservoir. I'll bring it up as part of this, and, and because you didn't have a public comment period, I'll be very brief on it. Uh, a lot of comments have been made, especially from, uh, P E C about, uh, and, and Lee's mentioned this to me before too. When you put property in con- conservation or conservatorship, you know, it doesn't require schools, health, safety, police, or fire department. And, and I disagree with that a hundred percent. If you take a look at most farm areas and conserved areas even that aren't being farmed, they have families, and each kid costs the taxpayers of this county almost ten thousand dollars a year for education, okay? And most families are anywhere from two to four kids per area, okay? So you're looking at anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars a year in county expense just for education, and that property has been taken off, basically taken off the rolls. Yeah, it has, Lee.
Not the property that the home is on.
Not the property the home is on, but the rest of the acreage is, okay? And the public, it's no appreciation out of that at all. It's not open for, you know, someone takes it out and says, I'm gonna take a hundred acres out and put it in conservatorship, you know, and, and, and not do anything with it. Public doesn't get any use of that. Now, if they wanna open it to the public as part of our green space and do something like that, I'm all for it, you know? That, that's, that's great. But when we start taking property out and, uh, it, it's costing, you know, it costs more for fire and police to go out to these rural areas. You know, it's wear and tear on both the labor and the, uh, vehicles to go out there. So the expense is still there. It, it doesn't just go away because you put it in conservatorship. Uh, that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Close the public comment period. Uh, so we would go back then to item nine A, Conference of Plan, Mr. Zodi.
Good evening again. Um, this is, this discussion, I believe, is placed on the agenda by you all at our, uh, November thirteenth meeting or twelfth meeting. Um, I'm not sure if y'all received the email, uh, where information is distributed for some proposed changes. Um, as of now.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
There was an email that was sent out yesterday with some proposed changes made by Supervisor Frame.
Okay. I thought you said something else. I couldn't hear you.
And that's really the only update that staff has for you all at this point.
I had a couple of changes that I recommended. One on the bottom page, uh, thirty-six, where we say, uh, currently it states a major transportation improvement also includes long-term project, the realignment of Route twenty, Route three intersection, and the construction of a new parkway in the Route three area as part of the future small area plan. I rewrote that because I don't think we're necessarily committed to the, uh, realignment of the Route twenty, Route three intersection. And I rewrote it to say, a major transportation improvement, long-term project, is the construction of a new parkway in the Route three area to be defined in the small area plan for the Route three corridor. Also to be considered in that small area plan is how to best manage traffic flow between Route three and Route twenty. County will consider projects from the cited studies listed in the chart below for incorporation into the VDOT six-year improvement program as appropriate and as funding becomes available. This doesn't lock us into any particular, uh, solution on those, uh, charts that they had, but it says we will look at it as we put together the small area plan.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And you also proposed on page thirty-nine to, in that table, to fix the language there as well.
That's right. And the same issue, right? Change the project description to read under, uh, uh, the hot Route twenty, evaluate the intersection to best manage traffic flow. This is, uh, just those two, two areas to say, we're not committed to re-doing that at this point.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know at this point what the answer needs to be.
That's right.
Mr. Frame, for clarity, your speaking about your first comment was that you said the last paragraph to read. Now, there's the, the proposed transportation improvements. Is that the piece that you're talking about on page thirty-six?
Yeah, that, that paragraph.
Okay, I just need to mark that.
Uh, let's see.
While you're looking, if you, if I might, on that same page thirty-six, uh, there, I've had conversations, and it also came up in the public hearing a number of times. I, I think we need to put lang- and I think you addressed this in your opening remarks at the public hearing, but in the paragraph D, uh, where it's talking to the Phase one and Phase two studies, seems to me that we need to make clear that those were VDOT studies and that they were adopted by boards on June twenty-seventh of oh-six and September the eleventh of oh-seven. I mean, that's, that's where those came from. That's what the, uh, what VDOT wanted in there. Similarly, then on page thirty-seven, it, that, in the blue there, it says, Orange County Proposed Transportation Improvement is, is the overall title.
Mm-hmm.
It, it really should read Proposed Transportation Improvement, I'm sorry, VDOT Proposed Transportation Improvement for Orange County. That's what they literally are. It makes it, it makes it sound like the county's proposing those.
Yeah.
And we, we're not even in that business.
Okay.
These are just, these are just cleanups. And I would add the word VDOT in front of the, the, uh, both the Phase two and the Phase one studies, again, just to re- emphasize what those are and where they came from. This, this was a last-minute addition, as you know. Planning Commission never even saw it. It was done at a VDOT request, and so a little cleanup, I think, is in order. Sorry, I just, while we were there, I wanted to get those.
Another item on, uh, page thirteen, uh, uh, under Objective, uh, A, and I, I think I made a mistake earlier when I said Objective B in the email I sent out. Objective A, for promoting preservation of significant historical areas, sites, and buildings, uh, add another bullet, consider transfer of development rights and conservation easements where appropriate. Uh, on page seventeen, two things. Uh, change the second bullet there to read, uh, to promote our agricultural tourism and heritage tourism industries. Just add the, uh, term, uh, and heritage tourism. And another, uh, bullet on that, uh, same segment would be, uh, uh, develop plans to celebrate major historic milestones such as the Battle of Wilderness Sex with Centennial and the German, Germanic Colony Trit Centennial. Then be another bullet under the, uh, promoting tourism.
Cisco Centennial and Germanic Colonies Trit.
Trit Centennial. And then, uh, uh, on page twenty-seventh, the bottom of the page, where we talk about the areas designated for economic development, add to that paragraph designation of an economic development land use category does not mean that all such area will be developed. The Small Area Plan, as an extension of the Comprehensive Plan, will detail which areas will be developed and which areas will be preserved.
Okay. Before you go forward with that, I totally buy what you're trying to say there.
Mm-hmm.
However, if you market economic development, you're marketing economic development. You can't because how would someone who's looking at to potentially put something there? You're, you're not.
Well.
I hear what you're saying, and I, 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 I want you to know that I agree with what you're saying. But what I'm telling you is this, if you don't want the area to be developed, then don't put it there to be developed. Because what you're saying to someone, well, let's say they go and they're looking at, you know, out on Route three, and they go, oh man, this parcel falls within that. But then they come in here, well, you know, you're not in that small development area, and wow, yeah, we colored it red, and we thought it looked good. I, I think you're sending mixed, mixed messages. I like what you're trying to say, and I want, and I want you to say I suppo- I wanna say I support you in that. Then what I'm saying is, don't have all of Route three be economic development then. If you're concerned with all of Route three being developed, then you need to advocate to change the map. Because I think what you're doing is you're putting this in there to stop the whole area from being developed. Then don't put the whole area out there to be developed.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the, the King Parcel in particular. Uh, we would expect to put, you know, maybe a couple hundred acres of one kind, a couple hundred acres of another, uh, in that area. And the Small Area Plan would, Small Area Plan would define that. But what you're saying is because we run that thing, uh, that element all the way down to the Rapidan and all the way down to, uh, Culp Pepper, uh, maybe, uh, maybe we ought to, uh, cut that back a bit, uh, especially since some of those areas are already developed. But I would, I would still keep most of the area to the, uh, uh, south eastern segment that's currently red. I would still probably keep most of it red.
Well, I don't see changing the map as one of the things, as Bruce said, when you start taking out places that you can't, or things you're going with that with.
Well, and that's, and that's what I figured the Small Area Plan, we would be looking at that and saying, okay, this can't be developed because of this. This one's got a cultural resource there. We're gonna try to protect. This is the area I've got to put in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, uh, in place, you know, in, you know, in an impoundment. Uh, this is where the road's gonna go. I mean, those are the things you do in the Small Area Plan. Uh, but then the Small Area Plan, and if, and if we don't intend to extend the Small Area Plan to the entire reaches of this red area, then we probably need to cut that back to that area of the, uh, uh, Small Area Plan that we wanna deal with.
Well, and, and I, I will say, based upon a comment that was made a little while ago about the, the Tricor, um, okay? But with all due respect, they got to move their density to the other area. So while that particular geographic location was not developed, they got to basically move their development rights to make another area more densely populated than, than what we had allowed them to do at one time. So while you may not, while you may have a piece of land that doesn't get developed, that doesn't mean that the density, you know, doesn't get shifted somewhere else. So, um, it's, it's all in how you, you know, it's all in how you wanna paint the picture.
But you can also amend the future land use map as you adopt these, um,
The Small Area Plan?
Small Area Plans, kind of like we do for easements and that kind of thing.
Well, we're gonna have a, uh, the next, uh, meeting of the, the Route three area group is, uh, one next week.
Next Tuesday.
And, uh, uh, you know, but, but I would say that, that I, that I express, I understand your concern. And I think that, uh, if we're not planning to include it in the, in the, uh, Small Area Plan, that we need to do something else with it. How do you feel about that, Jim?
Well, it's, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. I mean, I, I think you have to go through the Small Area Planning process before you can identify which areas are, are to be developed or not.
Okay, but, but, but we can, we can do what Judah said, and if we do identify that we don't wanna do anything in certain.
Be taken out at that point.
Taken out at that point. But I still wanna leave that statement in there.
The, the only thing I would, only thing I would do with that statement, Lee, is I would, I would move it after the first sentence on page twenty-eight because you're referring to a Small Area Plan, and we don't, we don't bring that issue into the discussion until we get to the top of page twenty-eight. I, I would tuck it after that first sentence.
I, I, I guess that's all right. I just, uh, wanted to make sure that people didn't see the, uh, that the ED meant that it was all gonna be paved over. I, I don't know, you can, you can put it at the top of this next paragraph, which is fine.
To where, to where this opening line is a Small Area Plan, and then at the end of that sentence, then put.
The thing that I put on the, uh, uh, page twenty-seven, Economic Development Bottom Paragraph, uh, Jim suggested it's probably a good idea to move it up to the, uh, first paragraph on the next page.
Okay. Following a Small Area Plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right.
Um, are you done? I just have a.
No, my, my next big one. You got something else?
Well, I just have a couple little things really quick before you get into a big one.
Okay.
Um, I'm still gonna go back to page eleven, and I'm just still gonna say one more time how, if I can get to it, hold up, my cursor wants to move faster than I can. I'm still going to say that letter D is about the, um, um, the plan interpretation.
Language, I agree, I, I agree with you. That language has been in there since the ninety-nine plan, I think, but.
I'm, I'm trying to, to use some pro-social, um, verbiage here, but it's like saying, well, if you don't agree with it, just go back to what you agree with. I, 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 that paragraph is, is, is just, I think it's something somebody wrote to make themselves feel better about themselves, but read it. It doesn't mean anything. So, um, I would strike the entire paragraph, but that's just me, 'cause it doesn't mean anything.
Page eleven, which page?
Lo- number D, letter D.
D.
Paragraph.
D.
Copy.
I have no fondness for that paragraph.
Nor do I.
I never have.
Okay.
Okay, well, I won, I won that time because I tried to advocate for getting rid of that about a month ago, and that didn't happen. So, there you go. It's the new contemplative me that's working here. Um, question on page fourteen, under, um, the goal of, and this is just a question, um, you know, our whole objective C, you, you know, promoting best management practices and all land use to minimize surface and groundwater pollution and stormwater management, but yet we're advocating, and I'm just saying, but yet we're advocating that single-family homes be excluded from the storm wa- water management.
No, 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 I'm not saying that at all. No, I'm not saying that at all. It's just that right now under our, um, the current proposed ordinance is written, would the single home, single homeowner would not have to, he or she would be following a different protocol than what we typically require now or allow now for erosion sediment control, which is in lieu of agreement. So they'd post a bond, and they wouldn't have to go through the whole engineering practice as long as they stay under an acre of ground for stormwater management.
Mm-hmm. So if we're not, we're not holding them to what we're holding everybody else to.
No, that, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that there's an exemption for land disturbing activity for greater, for less than of forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet.
So we're not using best management practices on single-family homes less than one acre.
Or anything, or anywhere else. Correct.
Right. But we're saying in our Comprehensive Plan that we're going to use best management practices. So I'm just saying, again, we're saying one thing and doing something totally different. Majority of the homes that have been built in Orange County in the last forever have been by right, which would fall under this one-acre disturbance. So just, I'm just saying, we're, we're, we've got something in the Comprehensive Plan, and yet tonight, I'm not saying we're, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but, well, we're, we're doing. I'm not saying we're, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but, well, we're, we're doing it when it, it, on a single-family home.
Well, but I, I, I think the distinction is, I understand it is this. Today, in place, is a, through the Culpeper Soil and Water Conservation Program, is a requirement for best management practices for land disturbance. All we're saying is leave that, don't go to this new stuff.
Okay.
Leave the old stuff.
Okay, okay, then, thank you, you kinda cleared it up for me just a little bit.
Is that right? That, that's the, that's the exemption we're asking for. We didn't say remove all requirements.
So what we also changed it to is, we shouldn't call it best management practices, we're gonna call it the okay management practices.
Well, they, that's a term of art that they use, but I, it's, it's a little awkward.
Okay, um, on page eighteen, this is just a, um, let me get to it, cause. It is going to be letter B. It just work with Orange County School Board to develop a long-term strategic plan for improving education in the county. Can we say continuing improving education because it makes it sound like we don't have good education? There you go, just something to.
For continuous improvement.
Page eighteen, right at the bottom, it just says, work with Orange County School Board to develop a long-term strategic plan for improving education in the county.
For con.
Just continuous improvement or whatever.
For continuous improvement, okay.
All right, and then we'll go to Lee's biggie, cause I'm thinking his biggie's my biggie.
A two?
Yes.
Okay, A two.
Page twenty-four.
Page twenty-four.
Twenty-six.
Okay, I had, I had made some changes, Jim has made some changes to my changes.
Not many, just a few.
Uh, I guess, uh, some, uh.
By and large, I like what you did, I mean, I, I think, I think it, it, you know, is, is a little clearer what the intent is and what we're trying to describe.
Yeah, I, I, I guess the big change I made was put the first bullet was agricultural activity.
Yeah.
And I added to that as, as permitted by the zoning ordinance, because we don't define agricultural activity anywhere in this document. And it needed to have a little, and it needed to have some definition, and that's why I, I, I just added to your phrase there, as permitted by the zoning ordinance.
And I'm fine with that.
Whatever, whatever the zoning ordinance happens to be at the time, but certainly the way it is now. I, I was simply after definition at that point.
All right. The other is, I deleted that range of major and minor subdivisions with private streets connected to public. We're not talking about, I mean, that's not really what we're talking about, we're talking about single-family residential, well, we're talking about small neighborhoods, not developments. They, they may end up, they may end up becoming neighborhoods, but they aren't developments, it's different. And, uh.
Well, I mean, you ha-, you do have subdiv-, existing subdivisions with twenty, thirty and forty houses in them.
I know, but that's, that's, you know, I mean, we've got some of those. But I'm not, I'm not sure that that's the characteristic we want to promote in a subdivision. We wanna, we wanna encourage, uh, you know, if, if, if a farmer, you know, sells off a piece of property next to him and over twenty years that turns into fifteen properties, I don't have a problem with that. But what I'm worried about is the guy comes in and says, I'm gonna put in twenty homes as a development.
I, I agree, of course, there have been many of those for decades.
Let's see, uh, in the first paragraph there, the first sentence stays the same. Uh, and the, the second is rewritten to say, large undeveloped tracts of land in pasture or agricultural use interspersed with small neighborhoods define this category. Agricultural too preserves the rural character of this part of the county by protecting the predominant land use agriculture from conflicts with incompatible commercial and industrial uses.
And I added the word residential before commercial, incompatible residential, comma, commercial or industrial.
Okay. I must have, I might take this thing out of yours, that makes the, that's a.
I sent you a red line, but it may not have shown up as a red line.
Uh, my red is, my red is out of, out of.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's why.
I tried.
All right. Okay, uh, and then the second bullet down there, it said scattered groupings, uh, the third bullet's deleted, and then go to the last paragraph. Uh, land in the area is intended to promote the agricultural lifestyle and protect the characteristics of both small neighborhoods and farming communities. The plan for these areas is based on a modest increase in the number of similar or compatible mixed uses. And I scratched the word preferably, but I would just say adjacent to existing residential or, or commercial developments, i.e. infill them. In the future, and this is your addition, care should be taken to assure that development in the A two area does not negatively impact the land located, and I can't read it.
In, in adjoining A one areas.
In adjoining A one areas nor in.
Nearby agricultural land uses, I mean, I, it's, you're, I'm sure that's what you were talking about is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you repeat that sentence for me, please?
I'll give you this.
Okay, thanks.
I, I think it reads, in the future, care should be taken to assure that development in the A two area does not negatively impact the land located in adjoining A one areas of the county, nor nearby agricultural land uses in A two, period. I, I put a period after A two.
For reason, during the public comment period, there were a number of people who read the earlier version of this and it, and I thought that this made it a little more emphasis on agricultural and a little less on, on development. And I went through the, the old one and I thought maybe I'd pull out some of the bullets. I didn't really find any of the bullets there, they weren't adequately covered in, in what we say here. That's all I got.
You mentioned the public hearings, I've got a, I, I, I took several pages of notes between the planning commission and the board public hearing. And I went back and looked at those and it, it sort of struck me that there were, you know, there, there clearly were some comments that were helpful and actionable. But some people used their time to make personal attacks and try to intimidate, which I found rather interesting. And, and a number of the comments were based on just bad information, stuff that just simply wasn't true. Wasn't even in the document, which I found also quite interesting, so. For example, one of the things that struck me, there was about, according to my note, there were about ten speakers who said, keep the old plan. I wasn't sure whether they were talking about the two thousand and six plan or the, or the January ninth two seven, two thousand and seven plan, or the September eleventh two thousand and seven plan, or the January twenty, twenty-seven, two thousand and nine plan. But, you know, it, it, it concerned me a little bit that they would say something like that because if, if you read these things, I went back to the nineteen ninety-nine plan and read very carefully through there to try to understand what they were saying. And one of the things that's clear is that in the timeframe from the two thousand and six plan to the two thousand and nine plan, there was sort of a political football game going on here because you had a plan that was approved on May ninth of two thousand and six. Eight months later, there was an amended plan, eight months later, there was another amended plan, sixteen months later, there was another amended plan. And we were criticized for moving too fast and making too many changes. I felt, I, I, I struck that, struck me as being funny. I looked at the two thousand and nine plan and I said, okay, what, what's really, why would you wanna change that? What, what, what caused this, actually, the previous board is to initiate a process in two thousand and ten to change it. And I pretty quickly found out why. That two thousand and nine plan made some projections that frankly were absurd. One example is that according to that plan, eleven years from now, the population of Orange County is gonna be somewhere between a hundred and twenty-six and a hundred and fifty-two thousand people. Look at page eighty-one and eighty-two. To do that, you'd have to build twelve new lake of the woods sized developments between now and twenty-twenty, in the next eleven years, twelve. We're thirty-four thousand now and you'd need to build twelve of the, twelve new ones to, to, to get to that number. Not gonna happen, you're not gonna build one of those in, every eleven months going forward. What, what really drove that home for me though is right now, according to two thousand and ten census, we've got about fourteen thousand dwelling units in the county, give or take. That plan says that we would have to build forty-two thousand new units.